Everybody, are you all set? All right, I'd like to call the Monday May 14 Board Selectment Meeting to Water. First on the agenda is a presentation of congratulatory letters to the Eagle Scouts. Under the Board of Selectmen, we have to vote on or reserve requests submitted by Dan LeBlanc, ambulance abatement, settle some action with the Tuesday Club of Assonet they want to use the band stand for their strawberry festival. And then we'll be working on the town budget. Under Personnel, we have some appointments and then we will discuss new business in upcoming meetings. With that being said, we received a letter on April 2nd and it states, "Dear Falsadick, Lee Baumgartner, and Lisa Pacico, my name is Joanne Violet and I'm writing on behalf of the Assonet Boy Scout Troop 164. Our troop has the honor of awarding three young men with the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of Eagle Scout. We are very proud of these three young men and we would like to request a letter of congratulations from you in recognition of their achievements. Their Eagle Court of Honor will be held on May 8th, 2014. Each scout has earned many merit badges throughout their scouting years as well as accomplishing an Eagle Scout service project. For their service projects, they had to find something in the community that needed to be done. They then had to take on the role of a leader, work with their peers as well as adults, and get the project complete from beginning to end. Each young man chose a worthwhile cause and each was successful in accomplishing what they set out to do. I've attached a short description of the Eagle projects performed by these young men as well as their names and addresses. Please help me in honoring these three young men. I know they will be honored to receive recognition from you and I know that they are on their way to becoming model citizens, which we can all be proud." So, some of the projects that they did was, Thomas chose to paint the lines in the parking lot at the church that they attend. The lines were faded for many, many years and he decided that the lot needed a facelift, so he took that on. He led a team of scouts and adults on this project from cleaning the lot, prepping the paint, obtaining all of the materials and tools needed to accomplish the job for completing the project successfully. Thomas' future goal is to become a Massachusetts State Trooper. For now, he will be graduating high school and has already enlisted in the U.S. Marine Corps. Next, we have Dane. Dane chose to refurbish the puffed benches at the local Hathaway Park in Assonet. He led a team of scouts and adults in assembling the benches, sandblasting them, fixing anything that needed fixing, and reassembling them at the park. He attained all of the permission that was needed from local officials as well as obtaining the materials needed to complete the job. Dane's future goal is to become a Massachusetts State Trooper. He will be graduating high school this year and is enrolled in classes for the fall in criminal justice. Next, we have Luke. Luke was chose to refurbish his sheds at the church that his family attends. These sheds were in need of refurbishing from the rough weather that we all live in. He was able to secure approvals and materials needed to accomplish this job. He also led a team of scouts and adults in the task of scraping the sheds to ready them for paint, then putting a nice brush coat of paint on them to make them look as good as new. Luke is a sophomore in high school and is very active in baseball, basketball, and football. And we have Luke, Dane, and Thomas here.
Dane is absent.
Okay, so we have Luke.
Luke is at baseball.
And Luke is at baseball, okay.
He's got his little figured out, doesn't he, at baseball?
Well, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and my counterparts in Chinatown, we are very, very grateful and very honored that you have done so much for this community and there is no doubt in my mind that you will be taking one of our seats in the near future. Do you have anything to say, Paul?
Congratulations for their hard work and everything they did for the community and I wish them luck in their future endeavors. And second, we'll have another congratulations on the board.
I also am very honored that you guys are here sharing this with us. It's nice to see people step up for the community. It's even nicer to see young people step up for the community and stay involved. Thing is to stay involved, I'll tell you what, if you do this now, you stay involved, you'll feel so much better when you're my age. You look back and you go, God, I did a lot of good things in my, not me personally, but you'll be able to, I did a lot of great things in my life, so keep it up, keep it up.
So, do we have some of the accepting letters in order? And your name?
Thomas.
Thomas, you're laying on top. There you go. Thank you, thank you so, so very much.
Thank you, Thomas.
Oh, Dane, you are here. Hi, Dane, do you remember me?
No.
Sort of. That's because you were that high when you went to the before and after school program.
That was going to be my question. Do you remember him?
Of course I do.
And Luke as well?
Congratulations.
No, Luke, Luke was younger.
No, he was the youngest. Luke is only a year behind him.
You were in her class?
Thank you so much.
Good teacher?
You have some good guys.
Ah, good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, anybody here for a public discussion?
Yes, I am.
Of course you are.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I really got nothing. It's, as you all remember, I worked on the CPA thing considerably. Well, I don't know if you've seen the results of the CPA, what there's been, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, in other words, you know, so where I had to photocopy it, I only made one copy.
That's fine.
Okay, so in other words, that's the result of what's going on with CPA now. And these towns are really benefiting real well, always by what we overlooked. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I really want to look at this. I haven't seen this.
I still keep in touch with it.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should let us, like you have tonight, but keep us updated because even though it didn't go forward, I mean, we don't know where it's going to be, you know, so...
As, you know, once you see that, in other words, you know, I think it was prematurely dumped, you know, but that's the way things go.
That was on ballot last year, right? Not this past year, right?
It came to a town meeting.
Town meeting.
Yeah, it came to a town meeting and...
Two years ago, right, two years ago.
Yeah.
It's gone, but it's not forgotten.
Oh, well, that's good because I haven't forgotten it either.
No.
And if it ever gets reenacted, I'm still around, in other words, I'll be more than pleased to try to help forward it.
Well, you know you'll be the first person to come.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Dan LeBlanc. Hi, Dan.
Here.
How are you?
Good.
You have a reserve request?
Yes.
You want to speak on behalf of that?
Yep. We, you have a copy of my memo and I would hope. This is the first month that I've had a warrant as high as it was. I was expecting to be able to run through May, but I'm already out of money. I'm about $3,000 short this month without even going into the last month of the fiscal year, June. Although I will be losing two clients this month. I have already picked up one, new client, so it's kind of the way the things have been going, yeah. I'm estimating, based on what we spent in the first 11 months of this fiscal year, that I'll be needing $14,300 to finish the year. That also includes the money that I'm short this month so that the warrant, we can finish the warrant for this month. The average is a little bit over $11,000 over the first 11 months of the fiscal year. I averaged $11,120.54 over the first 11 months of the year. Again, we rate that out of the $122,325 we've spent this year already, 75% of that money goes back to the town next year.
Right.
Not soon, unfortunately.
Do you have a motion from the Board to approve the reserve request submitted by Dan LeBlanc in the amount of $14,300?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second any for the discussion. If you're in line, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
You are all set?
We'll send that over to the Finance Committee.
And on my side to this?
Yes.
The town was nice enough to purchase me a bulletin board that is, was installed yesterday or the day before, no, last week in Town Hall, so now all veterans' issues can be posted on the bulletin board separate from, I was kind of overtaking all of the town clerk's bulletin board, so now we have our own separate bulletin board. So I appreciate that, that's very nice, thank you.
And the Chair, do you want to update the Board on the Chair?
The Chair, as a matter of fact, again, today, because of the forecast for this Saturday, we're going to flag graves for Memorial Day this Saturday, but because of the forecast of rain Friday through Saturday, we flagged all of the large, all of the cemeteries today, including burial grounds. Now, I want to publicly thank Mike Pique who removed a lot of the old flags, I think last week, so it made our job a little bit easier. We did the burial grounds, Roundsville, all the smaller cemeteries in East Freetown and the Assonet, the smaller cemeteries in Assonet will be done this week. Reeds will be put up probably the week after, the week before Memorial Day. Those have been ordered and we're waiting for them to come in. Also, we've had donated to us five new wreath stands. These are all constructed out of rebar because the wreath stands that we were buying in the past were kind of flimsy and didn't last very long, so these are made out of rebar. They won't go anywhere, they're very heavy and sturdy. The Honor Chair today was also, the permanent chair came in last week and it's been placed at the VFW Hall. It's on the stand with the chairs and the stanchions and the ropes and the whole nine yards. It's there physically until we finish the floor in Town Hall. The plan is to dedicate it on June 29th at the VFW outside during the fundraiser for the memorial park, the poker run, cruise night, big roast dinner. That chair as well as the portable chair will both be there. Again, like I said, the guest speaker will be Captain, retired Captain Frederick Perrington, who was a pre-ODN Vietnam for six and a half years. He will be our guest speaker to dedicate the chairs. He also helped us flag graves today. Everything's in, everything's paid for. As soon as the floor is done, after the 29th of June, we'll move the permanent chair over to Town Hall. Looks nice. The only thing I've got to do this week is to get the plaques that I want to have indicating all the people that have contributed to the Honor Chair. I've been contacted by a lot of people since you guys gave me permission to go ahead with this and the town, it was unbelievable, the money that was thrown at me to do this so that we were able to do two chairs. I'm getting phone calls like crazy from other communities that want to know, what do we do? All we do is put the word out that this is what we're doing and people came forward, they stepped up. It's refreshing to see this happening.
It was awesome.
The portable chair will stay at the VFW so that we have access to it when we need it to go to the schools and do other venues, nursing homes, things like that. It's an easier chair to take around. The permanent chair will be permanently at Town Hall.
I was thinking outside the bar. Everybody, are you all set? All right, I'd like to call the Monday May 14 Board Selectment Meeting to Water. First on the agenda is a presentation of congratulatory letters to the Eagle Scouts. Under the Board of Selectmen, we have to vote on or reserve requests submitted by Dan LeBlanc, ambulance abatement, settle some action with the Tuesday Club of Assonet they want to use the band stand for their strawberry festival. And then we'll be working on the town budget. Under Personnel, we have some appointments and then we will discuss new business in upcoming meetings. With that being said, we received a letter on April 2nd and it states, "Dear Falsadick, Lee Baumgartner, and Lisa Pacico, my name is Joanne Violet and I'm writing on behalf of the Assonet Boy Scout Troop 164. Our troop has the honor of awarding three young men with the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of Eagle Scout. We are very proud of these three young men and we would like to request a letter of congratulations from you in recognition of their achievements. Their Eagle Court of Honor will be held on May 8th, 2014. Each scout has earned many merit badges throughout their scouting years as well as accomplishing an Eagle Scout service project. For their service projects, they had to find something in the community that needed to be done. They then had to take on the role of a leader, work with their peers as well as adults, and get the project complete from beginning to end. Each young man chose a worthwhile cause and each was successful in accomplishing what they set out to do. I've attached a short description of the Eagle projects performed by these young men as well as their names and addresses. Please help me in honoring these three young men. I know they will be honored to receive recognition from you and I know that they are on their way to becoming model citizens, which we can all be proud." So, some of the projects that they did was, Thomas chose to paint the lines in the parking lot at the church that they attend. The lines were faded for many, many years and he decided that the lot needed a facelift, so he took that on. He led a team of scouts and adults on this project from cleaning the lot, prepping the paint, obtaining all of the materials and tools needed to accomplish the job for completing the project successfully. Thomas' future goal is to become a Massachusetts State Trooper. For now, he will be graduating high school and has already enlisted in the U.S. Marine Corps. Next, we have Dane. Dane chose to refurbish the puffed benches at the local Hathaway Park in Assonet. He led a team of scouts and adults in assembling the benches, sandblasting them, fixing anything that needed fixing, and reassembling them at the park. He attained all of the permission that was needed from local officials as well as obtaining the materials needed to complete the job. Dane's future goal is to become a Massachusetts State Trooper. He will be graduating high school this year and is enrolled in classes for the fall in criminal justice. Next, we have Luke. Luke was chose to refurbish his sheds at the church that his family attends. These sheds were in need of refurbishing from the rough weather that we all live in. He was able to secure approvals and materials needed to accomplish this job. He also led a team of scouts and adults in the task of scraping the sheds to ready them for paint, then putting a nice brush coat of paint on them to make them look as good as new. Luke is a sophomore in high school and is very active in baseball, basketball, and football. And we have Luke, Dane, and Thomas here.
Dane is absent.
Okay, so we have Luke.
Luke is at baseball.
And Luke is at baseball, okay.
He's got his little figured out, doesn't he, at baseball?
Well, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and my counterparts in Chinatown, we are very, very grateful and very honored that you have done so much for this community and there is no doubt in my mind that you will be taking one of our seats in the near future. Do you have anything to say, Paul?
Congratulations for their hard work and everything they did for the community and I wish them luck in their future endeavors. And second, we'll have another congratulations on the board.
I also am very honored that you guys are here sharing this with us. It's nice to see people step up for the community. It's even nicer to see young people step up for the community and stay involved. Thing is to stay involved, I'll tell you what, if you do this now, you stay involved, you'll feel so much better when you're my age. You look back and you go, God, I did a lot of good things in my, not me personally, but you'll be able to, I did a lot of great things in my life, so keep it up, keep it up.
So, do we have some of the accepting letters in order? And your name?
Thomas.
Thomas, you're laying on top. There you go. Thank you, thank you so, so very much.
Thank you, Thomas.
Oh, Dane, you are here. Hi, Dane, do you remember me?
No.
Sort of. That's because you were that high when you went to the before and after school program.
That was going to be my question. Do you remember him?
Of course I do.
And Luke as well?
Congratulations.
No, Luke, Luke was younger.
No, he was the youngest. Luke is only a year behind him.
You were in her class?
Thank you so much.
Good teacher?
You have some good guys.
Ah, good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
All right, anybody here for a public discussion?
Yes, I am.
Of course you are.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I really got nothing. It's, as you all remember, I worked on the CPA thing considerably. Well, I don't know if you've seen the results of the CPA, what there's been, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, in other words, you know, so where I had to photocopy it, I only made one copy.
That's fine.
Okay, so in other words, that's the result of what's going on with CPA now. And these towns are really benefiting real well, always by what we overlooked. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I really want to look at this. I haven't seen this.
I still keep in touch with it.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should let us, like you have tonight, but keep us updated because even though it didn't go forward, I mean, we don't know where it's going to be, you know, so...
As, you know, once you see that, in other words, you know, I think it was prematurely dumped, you know, but that's the way things go.
That was on ballot last year, right? Not this past year, right?
It came to a town meeting.
Town meeting.
Yeah, it came to a town meeting and...
Two years ago, right, two years ago.
Yeah.
It's gone, but it's not forgotten.
Oh, well, that's good because I haven't forgotten it either.
No.
And if it ever gets reenacted, I'm still around, in other words, I'll be more than pleased to try to help forward it.
Well, you know you'll be the first person to come.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Dan LeBlanc. Hi, Dan.
Here.
How are you?
Good.
You have a reserve request?
Yes.
You want to speak on behalf of that?
Yep. We, you have a copy of my memo and I would hope. This is the first month that I've had a warrant as high as it was. I was expecting to be able to run through May, but I'm already out of money. I'm about $3,000 short this month without even going into the last month of the fiscal year, June. Although I will be losing two clients this month. I have already picked up one, new client, so it's kind of the way the things have been going, yeah. I'm estimating, based on what we spent in the first 11 months of this fiscal year, that I'll be needing $14,300 to finish the year. That also includes the money that I'm short this month so that the warrant, we can finish the warrant for this month. The average is a little bit over $11,000 over the first 11 months of the fiscal year. I averaged $11,120.54 over the first 11 months of the year. Again, we rate that out of the $122,325 we've spent this year already, 75% of that money goes back to the town next year.
Right.
Not soon, unfortunately.
Do you have a motion from the Board to approve the reserve request submitted by Dan LeBlanc in the amount of $14,300?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second any for the discussion. If you're in line, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
You are all set?
We'll send that over to the Finance Committee.
And on my side to this?
Yes.
The town was nice enough to purchase me a bulletin board that is, was installed yesterday or the day before, no, last week in Town Hall, so now all veterans' issues can be posted on the bulletin board separate from, I was kind of overtaking all of the town clerk's bulletin board, so now we have our own separate bulletin board. So I appreciate that, that's very nice, thank you.
And the Chair, do you want to update the Board on the Chair?
The Chair, as a matter of fact, again, today, because of the forecast for this Saturday, we're going to flag graves for Memorial Day this Saturday, but because of the forecast of rain Friday through Saturday, we flagged all of the large, all of the cemeteries today, including burial grounds. Now, I want to publicly thank Mike Pique who removed a lot of the old flags, I think last week, so it made our job a little bit easier. We did the burial grounds, Roundsville, all the smaller cemeteries in East Freetown and the Assonet, the smaller cemeteries in Assonet will be done this week. Reeds will be put up probably the week after, the week before Memorial Day. Those have been ordered and we're waiting for them to come in. Also, we've had donated to us five new wreath stands. These are all constructed out of rebar because the wreath stands that we were buying in the past were kind of flimsy and didn't last very long, so these are made out of rebar. They won't go anywhere, they're very heavy and sturdy. The Honor Chair today was also, the permanent chair came in last week and it's been placed at the VFW Hall. It's on the stand with the chairs and the stanchions and the ropes and the whole nine yards. It's there physically until we finish the floor in Town Hall. The plan is to dedicate it on June 29th at the VFW outside during the fundraiser for the memorial park, the poker run, cruise night, big roast dinner. That chair as well as the portable chair will both be there. Again, like I said, the guest speaker will be Captain, retired Captain Frederick Perrington, who was a pre-ODN Vietnam for six and a half years. He will be our guest speaker to dedicate the chairs. He also helped us flag graves today. Everything's in, everything's paid for. As soon as the floor is done, after the 29th of June, we'll move the permanent chair over to Town Hall. Looks nice. The only thing I've got to do this week is to get the plaques that I want to have indicating all the people that have contributed to the Honor Chair. I've been contacted by a lot of people since you guys gave me permission to go ahead with this and the town, it was unbelievable, the money that was thrown at me to do this so that we were able to do two chairs. I'm getting phone calls like crazy from other communities that want to know, what do we do? All we do is put the word out that this is what we're doing and people came forward, they stepped up. It's refreshing to see this happening.
It was awesome.
The portable chair will stay at the VFW so that we have access to it when we need it to go to the schools and do other venues, nursing homes, things like that. It's an easier chair to take around. The permanent chair will be permanently at Town Hall.
I was thinking outside the bar. Everybody, are you all set? All right, I'd like to call the Monday May 14 Board Selectment Meeting to Water. First on the agenda is a presentation of congratulatory letters to the Eagle Scouts. Under the Board of Selectmen, we have to vote on or reserve requests submitted by Dan LeBlanc, ambulance abatement, settle some action with the Tuesday Club of Assonet they want to use the band stand for their strawberry festival. And then we'll be working on the town budget. Under Personnel, we have some appointments and then we will discuss new business in upcoming meetings. With that being said, we received a letter on April 2nd and it states, "Dear Falsadick, Lee Baumgartner, and Lisa Pacico, my name is Joanne Violet and I'm writing on behalf of the Assonet Boy Scout Troop 164. Our troop has the honor of awarding three young men with the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of Eagle Scout. We are very proud of these three young men and we would like to request a letter of congratulations from you in recognition of their achievements. Their Eagle Court of Honor will be held on May 8th, 2014. Each scout has earned many merit badges throughout their scouting years as well as accomplishing an Eagle Scout service project. For their service projects, they had to find something in the community that needed to be done. They then had to take on the role of a leader, work with their peers as well as adults, and get the project complete from beginning to end. Each young man chose a worthwhile cause and each was successful in accomplishing what they set out to do. I've attached a short description of the Eagle projects performed by these young men as well as their names and addresses. Please help me in honoring these three young men. I know they will be honored to receive recognition from you and I know that they are on their way to becoming model citizens, which we can all be proud." So, some of the projects that they did was, Thomas chose to paint the lines in the parking lot at the church that they attend. The lines were faded for many, many years, and he decided that the lot needed a facelift, so he took that on. He led a team of scouts and adults on this project from cleaning the lot, prepping the paint, obtaining all of the materials and tools needed to accomplish the job for completing the project successfully. Thomas' future goal is to become a Massachusetts State Trooper. For now, he will be graduating high school and has already enlisted in the U.S. Marine Corps. Next, we have Dane. Dane chose to refurbish the parked benches at the local Hathaway Park in the Sonnet. He led a team of scouts and adults in assembling the benches, sandblasting them, fixing anything that needed fixing, and reassembling them at the park. He attained all of the permission that was needed from local officials, as well as obtaining the materials needed to complete the job. Dane's future goal is to become a Massachusetts State Trooper. He will be graduating high school this year and is enrolled in classes for the law in criminal justice. Next, we have Luke. Luke was chose to refurbish his sheds at the church that his family attends. These sheds were in need of refurbishment from the rough living and weather that we all live in. He was able to secure approvals and materials needed to accomplish his job. He also led a team of scouts and adults in the task of scraping the sheds to ready them for paint, then putting a nice fresh coat of paint on them to make them look as good as new. Luke is a sophomore in high school and is very active in baseball, basketball, and football. And we have Luke, Dane, and Thomas here.
Dane is absent.
Okay, so we have Luke.
Luke is at baseball.
And Luke is at baseball, okay.
He's got his little figured out, doesn't he, at baseball?
Well, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and my counterparts in China, we are very, very grateful and very honored that you have done so much for this community. And there is no doubt in my mind that you will be taking one of our seats in the near future. Do you have anything to say, Paul?
Directly to the hard work that everything exists to the community, and I wish them luck in their future endeavors. And second, we'll have a letter with congratulations on the board.
I also am very honored that you guys are here sharing this with us. It's nice to see people step up for the community. It's even nicer to see young people step up for the community and stay involved. Thing is, to stay involved, you're, I'll tell you what, if you do this now, you stay involved, you'll feel so much better when you're married, you look back, and you go, God, I did a lot of good things in my, not me personally, but you'll be able to. I did a lot of great things in my life, so keep it up, keep it up.
So, do we have some of the accepting letters in order? And your name?
Thomas.
Thomas, you're right on top. There you go. Thank you, thank you so, so very much.
Thank you, Thomas.
Oh, Dane, you are here. Hi, Dane, do you remember me? Sort of. That's because you were that high when you went to the before and after school.
That was going to be my question.
Of course I do.
And Luke as well?
Congratulations.
No, Luke, Luke was younger.
No, he was the youngest. Luke is only a year behind him.
You were in her class?
All right. Thank you so much.
Good teacher?
You have some good guys.
Well, good.
They were, huh? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
All right, anybody here for a public discussion?
Yes, I am.
Of course you are.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I really got nothing. It's, as you all remember, I worked on the CPA thing conservatively. Well, I don't know if you've seen the results of the CPA, what there's been. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, in other words, you know? So, where I had to photocopy, I only made one copy.
That's fine.
Okay. So, in other words, that's the result of what's going on with CPA. And these towns are really benefiting real well, though, is by what we overlooked. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I really want to look at this. I haven't seen this.
I still keep in touch with it.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should let us, like you have tonight, but keep us updated. Because even though it didn't go forward, I mean, we don't know where it's going to be.
Yeah.
You know, so...
As, you know, once you see that, in other words, you know, I think it was prematurely dumped, you know? But that's the way things go.
That was on the ballot last year, right? Not this past year.
It came to a town meeting.
Town meeting.
Yeah, it came to a town meeting and...
Two years ago, right, two years ago.
Yeah.
It's gone, but it's not forgotten.
Oh, well, that's good, because I haven't forgotten it either.
No.
And if it ever gets reenacted, I'm still around. In other words, I'll be more than pleased to try to help forward it.
Well, you know you'll be the first person to come back.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. All right, next on the agenda, we have Dan LeBlanc. Hi, Dan.
Here.
How are you?
Good.
You have a reserve request?
Yes.
Do you want to speak on behalf of that?
Yep. We, you have a copy of my memo, and I would hope. This is the first month that I've had a warrant as high as it was. I was expecting to be able to run through May, but I'm already out of money. I'm about $3,000 short this month, without even going into the last month of the fiscal year, June. Although I will be losing two clients this month, I have already picked up one new client. So, it's kind of the way the things have been going, yeah. I'm estimating, based on what we spent in the first 11 months of this fiscal year, that I'll be needing $14,300 to finish the year. That also includes the money that I'm short this month, so that the warrant, we can finish the warrant for this month. The average is a little bit over $11,000. Over the first 11 months of the fiscal year, I averaged $11,120.54 over the first 11 months of the year. Again, I rate that out of the $123, $122,325 we've spent this year already, 75% of that money comes back to the town next year.
Right.
Not soon, unfortunately.
Do you have a motion from the board to approve the reserve request submitted by Dan LeBlanc in the amount of $14,300?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second any for the discussion. You're in, and I'll lose in favor, signify by I.
Aye.
You all set?
We'll send that over to the Finance Committee.
And on the side to this?
Yes.
The town was nice enough to purchase me a bulletin board that is, was installed yesterday or the day before, no, last week. In Town Hall, so now all veterans' issues can be posted on the bulletin board separate from, I was kind of overtaking all of the town clerk's bulletin board, so now we have our own separate bulletin board. So, I appreciate that. That's very nice. Thank you.
And the chair, do you want to update the board on the chair?
The chair, as a matter of fact, again, today, because of the forecast for this Saturday, we're going to flag graves for Memorial Day this Saturday. But because of the forecast of rain Friday through Saturday, we flagged all of the large, all of the cemeteries today, including burial grounds. Now, I want to publicly thank Mike Pique, who removed a lot of the old flags, I think, last week, so it made our job a little bit easier. We did the burial grounds, Roundsville, all the smaller cemeteries in East Freetown, and the Sonnet, the smaller cemeteries in the Sonnet will be done this week. Reeds will be put up probably the week after, the week before Memorial Day. Those have been ordered, and we're waiting for them to come in. Also, we've had donated to us five new wreath stands. These are all constructed out of rebar, because the wreath stands that we were buying in the past were kind of flimsy and didn't last very long. So, these are made out of rebar. They won't go anywhere. They're very heavy and sturdy. The honor chair today was also, the permanent chair came in last week, and it's been placed at the VFW Hall. It's on the stand with the chairs and the stanchions and the ropes and the whole nine yards. It's there physically until we finish the floor in Town Hall. The plan is to dedicate it on June 29th at the VFW outside during the fundraiser for the memorial park, the poker run, cruise night, big roast dinner. That chair, as well as the portable chair, will both be there. Again, like I said, the guest speaker will be Captain, retired Captain Frederick Perrington, who was a period of being Vietnam for six and a half years. He will be our guest speaker to dedicate the chairs. He also helped us flag graves today. Everything's in, everything's paid for. As soon as the floor is done, after the 29th of June, we'll move the permanent chair over to Town Hall. Looks nice. The only thing I've got to do this week is to get the plaques that I want to have indicating all the people that have contributed to the honor chair. I've been contacted by a lot of people since you guys gave me permission to go ahead with this. And the town, it was unbelievable, the money that was thrown at me to do this, so that we were able to do two chairs. I'm getting phone calls like crazy from other communities that want to know, what do we do? All we do is put the word out, that this is what we're doing, and people came forward, they stepped up. It's refreshing to see this happen. The portable chair will stay at the VFW, so that we have access to it when we need it to go to the schools and do other venues, nursing homes, things like that. It's an easier chair to take around. The permanent chair will be permanently at Town Hall.
I was thinking outside the box.
Finance Committee? And we have a request for a transfer here for the, the library, what do you have there?
This is just a transfer. I'm coming within my budget. From Personnel to Expenditions, yeah, books, materials.
All right, we have a...
Do we really need to move on?
Yes, we do. It's brought to my attention.
Budgets internally?
Yep. We need, they need our approval. For $900, I guess, transfer between, from, what is it?
Longevity?
Longevity?
To equipment replacement.
To equipment replacement.
And the other one is from payroll to books and library material. One's $900 and one's $45.
This doesn't have any, this doesn't have any impact on your budget.
Do we have a motion on this?
Make a motion and move it.
Okay, any second? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Can you come over here? Why are you guys just there?
Huh?
Are you in the next seat?
No, I shouldn't have done my work, and he's going to pull one through that before. Internally, why not?
It's something that Dan has put in place.
I don't have a problem. It still doesn't affect your mind.
Personnel stuff, they can't move supplies.
I don't have a problem with that, I, you know? But, I mean, it just, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't affect your mind. Again, that's right. I got a problem.
I've been doing between Personnel and...
Again, I got, I got no problem with that. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. You're all set.
Thank you.
You'll leave it all to...
Janet, to my honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one we have is the Assistant Health Agent. What the heck is that?
Agent.
Hero.
I am.
They need, the present balance in the account is $196, and they're looking for $4,108.78. We have a motion on that?
Not yet. Let me see it.
How can you answer any questions?
It says Assistant Health Agent fulfilling role of health, head health agent for the year. Also extra hours to try to maintain daily operations?
Yeah, well, the overview on this is that Mr. Bourgeois separated from us.
Huh?
Mr. Bourgeois separated from us last summer. And we needed somebody to pick up the slack and other things, other requirements that the state mandated that we do, plus Joe got a dollar an hour raise, so...
I wasn't aware that the state mandated that. Well, the state didn't, and they suggested it. They certainly didn't mandate it.
What, no, I'm not talking about the position. I'm talking about the work.
The work.
The activities have increased as far as health responsibilities and diseases and everything else.
So, again, and I mean, the building inspector was actually, yeah, he was the health agent. He was wearing a bunch of hats there. So, he broke that off, and now you have a building inspector, and you...
Yes, essentially, and, you know, with two separate budgets, the board health budget specifically only had the part-time agent in it. That's who they get paid from. The building inspector and the health agent got paid out of the building inspector. So, when he went away, there was a lot more activity for me to try to pick up. And I tried the best that I could to kind of keep it in check.
Since day one.
But the dollar that the union contract required to get, fulfill a higher position.
You didn't bring a chance to bring a copy of that, did you?
No, but certainly plenty of it. I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
I'm just curious. So, I'm still curious, I mean, maintain daily operations?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, the health agent has a full-time position.
Five inspections per test. I'll take the stuff like that. There was a big backlog, three, over three weeks. They just go on full-time.
So, again, yeah, I guess that's my question. You went from part-time to full-time.
No, no, I mean, I haven't switched until July 1st, when the position has been created. There was no position of a head health agent in that...
This July or that last July?
This July. So, I've managed to make it up.
I assume Tom Ying has to approve it all.
Right.
Yeah, well, I think so.
So, that was what the wait was in the meantime.
So, you make a motion to approve that?
$841.94 for two weeks, $128.77.
We got a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
No, I guess not. Abstain.
Over last year.
Okay.
That's going to be, based on the numbers that they've given us, I can tell you exactly how much money this is.
All right, we'll get to it.
Hold on, let me see.
Just the total budget, same as...
It's $46,000 more than we can pay. We find out what we're paying.
I don't, I didn't play with the numbers.
No, we've been playing with...
Right, all I know is that. She's always said $277 over last year.
I don't want to talk over you.
Very much.
The meeting that we had last Thursday night, I mean, they were adamant that they were...
Okay.
At 1.5 million.
We have a, also one here for the, this one here, I'd like a little explanation on planning and printing. Present balance in this account is 600, and they're asking for $548. Can anybody here can explain this here, for a printing of a FEMA flood insurance rate map?
Yeah, we're going to be dealing with new FEMA flood maps. This was a totally unplanned expense. The planner believes that the existing money in the budget will take her through the end of the year. This is for an item that was completely unplanned for.
How much money are we talking for this map?
That's the estimate that she had to do the map.
And this is the planning department?
Yes.
Planning.
See, you said, it matches this and such. Well, I don't know how they came up with the allocation.
Well, this is the thing that I'm trying to...
What numbers are these?
They haven't depleted their budget.
They've got $600 in the budget, and they're asking for 548, but they haven't depleted the budget yet, so it's not even close to being depleted.
I can work it right out.
I can work it right out.
All right, so you want this?
Do you have a copy?
No, but that's all right.
Well, that's okay.
Again, the question is what else is coming out of this budget?
They have their normal planned activities, their public area.
Get too much going on here, go ahead.
They have the normal advertising that they do for their general workload. And they would rather come in with an identified item that they know is going to basically bust the budget and get approval for that rather than have to come back at the end of the year and not be able to do work because they don't have money.
Well, I would say I'm gonna let them deplete their budget. We may, the veterans agent had to come back. So, I mean, you've got six hundred in there, they need five hundred forty-eight. Let them, let, let them, let them shoot off to five, five forty-eight and then let them come back again. We've been meeting on a fairly regular basis here, so. Let them use up that and then come back. We'll gladly give them the money once it's gone.
No, we'll talk about it.
Okay, well, next we have, the veterans agent is, run out of money. I'll let him explain his dilemma here.
I'd like to see it.
Last month I was here, estimated nine thousand dollars warrant for this month I have in the veterans benefit account, okay? We have a balance of twelve thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and nine cents on my warrant. This month is fourteen thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Not enough money for the warrant, the warrants on the eighteen hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents short. Anticipating my average, where the first eleven months of this year were, was eleven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-four cents, I'm asking for fourteen thousand three hundred dollars to, in the fiscal year, purely in estimate.
I'll make a motion that we, we increase this budget by fourteen three.
Okay, second honor?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay.
I'm Dan LeBlanc from the.
Chris Miller, nice to meet you.
Congratulations on your appointment. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
How, that's gonna get you to the.
End of the year.
That's gonna get you to the end of the year. Because just, just remember, there's only fifteen days after the end of the year if something happens here.
I asked, when I was asked for nine thousand.
I understand.
I just, I'm losing two clients next month. I've actually just dropped them, but I had an unexpected expense of three thousand dollars this month, that's what killed me. And I also cut the money. So, I told you, it's, I told you over the past few years, I'm just.
We understand it's.
My best crystal ball. If nobody else needs help, then it'll be cool.
But no problem with it.
I think, although, seven thousand dollars left over at the end of the year, at the end of the year.
Again, you know, there's, there's other, you know, there are other monies that you gotta, you gotta get it in.
It's going over.
Before the fifteen.
That's why I did this, so.
Right, okay.
You should still be all set with the numbers for next year, I mean, as far as the crystal ball tells you?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with the number, you know, I increased it slightly.
I know, it was very small.
Right now I'm at a hundred and twenty-three thousand, a hundred and. Next year I estimated a hundred and twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-one thousand in the benefits but not, and.
There was a forty-six number.
Today, I spent a hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and with a month to go. And the average is eleven, so I'm looking to spend a hundred and thirty-three thousand. I mean, so I do my budgeting. I estimate based on what I think I'm gonna need without going crazy.
Best guess, I know.
I know, I'll be back any moment next year, I know.
Well, it's, that's why funds are available for that particular kind of an operation.
Yeah, okay, again, just like I told us, I don't want to get seventy-five percent of that hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars back.
Okay, money was spent.
Yeah, of course.
All right, I guess that concludes this, so now I guess we're ready for our.
No, actually, it's, it's, it's kinda get out of, no sense in discussing the budget by anything until you get the schools open. It's the elephant in the room.
Substantial, yeah.
Why don't we do Carlton and Gary first so they can get out of there and then we'll go on to other accounts? Carlton, Gary?
Hello.
Good evening.
The inquiry was made to us relative to the number of computers we had in the communications department, in the police department, and in the fire department that have XP for their operating systems. So I provided Select NACID with the police and communication figures and.
The reason I asked both chiefs for the information is because the last time we met, we were talking about twenty thousand dollars to upgrade the Town Hall computer system to match the new operating system because XP is no longer supported. I'm talking to Carlton and Gary, especially Carlton, because Gary's, it's miniscule, it's like, I think it's five grand for Gary to upgrade his, but Carlton is very, it's much more significant because once XP is no longer supported, they cannot go into the state assistance any longer to do queries and so forth. We got that letter after last week's meeting. So his is more significant, it's more like, pretty much, twenty-eight thousand five hundred to take care of all the computers in the station plus his cruisers. Now, I know Carlton is gonna work on getting grants for that. And if the grant, my feeling, this is my feeling, if the grants, we should put it in our IT budget. If the grants come in and pay for it, wonderful, the money flows back to the general fund. If it doesn't, he's, he has to upgrade, they can no longer do queries on the street or anything else. So, to me, this is a very important issue. So, it's, that's why I asked both of the chiefs to come in tonight and to present their case regarding this.
It's a one-shot deal, right?
It's a one-shot deal, and it's not going into their budget.
Right, I got that.
Going to the town's IT budget.
We're increasing by thirteen thousand.
Is this, is this in the new budget, Paul, or is this in the old?
No, this is in fiscal year fifteen budget.
Okay, fifteen budget.
Between the two, it's thirty-three five.
Yeah, it's gonna come up, that line item will not come up to sixty-one thousand five hundred.
Right, because we added the twenty, now we're gonna add the rest of it on top. We took up the warrant article, remember?
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's the most.
As long as we remember that, it's a one-shot deal on that.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not going in anybody's budget, it's going into the IT budget.
And what's the line item gonna be called?
Replacement of equipment.
Well, we have to specify replacement of.
Let's put replacement, let's put replacement of equipment.
Related to computers.
No, replacement of police and fire.
Okay. And Town Hall.
And Town Hall.
Yeah, that's what the whole thing is.
We're updating why, sorry, I was confused with replacing and updating.
Are we updating or replacing?
No, you're replacing the equipment.
But it's for updating, you're doing this for updating?
You're replacing hardware, but you're.
You're replacing hardware and you're updating software?
Update the software.
Because apparently the hardware won't work with the, with the new.
Right, I get it, but we wanna track it.
The only thing that was in that line item before was eight thousand dollars, that was our normal eight thousand dollars that was in there.
So now it's going into management info system.
Right.
So we need to make a new line that says, update, no, replace.
I'll have Janice make a new line.
Right. And then we need to specify what departments we're replacing.
Each, each item, okay, so everybody is clear, the way I have it here is that Town Hall is twenty thousand, Gary is five thousand, correct Gary?
Correct.
Carlton, twenty-eight five, was that the right figure?
Yes.
Twenty-eight five, okay, and that leaves eight thousand, which was always in there for whatever happens during the year.
What budget?
You already got, you already got quotes on this, right?
From the IT, yeah, our IT guy, through Dell.
Okay, so you already got, this is how much, it's not gonna be a big surprise at the end.
Shouldn't be a surprise, he quoted the.
He just quoted.
Right, the hardware and his labor as well.
Okay.
What number is that?
It's on line one oh seven. Yeah, one five five is the, is the department.
Gee, fifty-five.
So it was increased to fifty-one five, right, before?
Right.
And now we're increasing it to?
Hey, does that do it? Yes, sixty-one five. So I gotta have Janice a different header than that.
Replacement equipment's going up to thirty-eight thousand, is that where we're at, if we're doing a new line somehow?
Well, right now I can only put it on here.
Yeah, right.
Because I can't change things.
Yeah, right, okay.
So this is the Town Hall.
And here you're going from fifty-eight two to sixty-one five.
Don't look at the book, look at the printout, it's in the middle of the table.
Yeah, that's the up to date.
All right.
Police, fire.
Town Hall, fire.
So does this thing, does that take care of the computers in the patrol cars?
Yes, all of the computers in the comm center, the computers in the police station and the laptops and then cars.
Now, you looked up, I mean, are you networked with, with the police and, I mean, the fire and the Town Hall or just the fire?
We're not, we're not integrated with fire.
No?
All of these computers go to a hub and then there's a connection to the criminal justice information system network, so we're connected to state and federal databases. Each of those computers can access data. And it's critical to the feds and the state that the computers from our, the host, which is what we're identified as, that our computers have security support, have patches, et cetera. Unfortunately, because of the win, the XP end of life, there's no more security updates, you know, patches, et cetera. So, they're pretty adamant you need to replace the systems.
Now, I don't have any problems with replacement, I was just wondering about the, you know, as far as the in-town, when the software is replaced, can you network directly with fire? Or do you have to go through another, another step in order to get the fire?
Well, they have.
If police request fire, what do they do, call them on a cell phone?
What's that?
If the police request fire.
The communications center will do that by radio, yeah.
You can't do that from the car, you can't do that from the truck.
We don't have, we don't have any laptops in that fire vehicles except for the ambulances, we have patient care boards.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, the laptops in the car to go to the station, just to work to the station.
Laptops in the police cars can communicate with the police station on a chat, they can also, they also communicate through the police station when they're querying data goes through the hub.
Now, when they, when they dispatch, they dispatch on two different computers, so?
When the dis, what happens is when, when the dispatch comes out, it's via radio, okay? Once it's sent out via radio and the dispatcher enters or populates fields in the record management system, then an officer can bring up that call in the computer and see what data's in there. But there is a delay because there's one dispatcher working phones, radio, trying to enter data. But we rely mostly on radio to communicate the calls rather than send them out on computer.
Are you gonna be around for a while or are you gonna leave now?
I was gonna exit.
Okay, I have a quick question I ask you privately.
Okay.
One second, if you're gonna leave. Is there any more questions for him?
No.
Thank you.
Tell me she, she's got. She's got. She sits in, sits in the chair, says.
Why?
I don't know, it's, it's not correct, it's not. She says, I forgot myself, I'm so.
The number is not right. The way she allocated is completely, I'm allocating, I've got the same figure, twenty-one thousand four thirty-nine two two nine.
What are you saying?
Oh, you asked me, I was listening.
Yeah, I know, so go ahead, what are you using?
I'm using, I got the, if you take the two communities and add the figures together, it gives you twenty-one thousand four thirty-nine two two nine, that's what I did. And then, and then they allocate that, then they break that down, they reduce it by capital debt and net transportation costs, which is what they're supposed to do, and it gives us nineteen thousand seven thirty-six one forty-four. Our net school spending requirement that the state gave us is seven thousand seven oh nine five eighty, and Lakelaw is nine eight oh eight seven seven. Then we have to add to that.
You're following it the way they're doing it, right?
I'm doing exactly how they do it. And I'm, and I'm coming, and I prove back up. I mean, there's forty-six thousand dollars somewhere here that, that we're picking up that we should pick up. I don't really.
You gotta be careful.
Well, I'm, I'm, let's put it this way, there's forty-six thousand dollars for some reason.
We can't figure out where it's coming from.
That's right, and my figures are matching exactly how, how they do it.
Did the enrollment change?
I'm using the figures that I verified with them that night. In fact, Lakelaw's had gone down.
Right, so I'm wondering, well, I don't know, I got that slip paper at three o'clock.
Only other thing that they could, well, even that doesn't come into play there. The only other thing different was that the debt is allocated at thirty-four percent, but that doesn't come into play.
No, that doesn't come into play. The whole time long, I mean, I know last year we spent nine million fifty-four oh eighty-eight and even, even the other night while we were there, I said, what, what number are you looking for? And she said, two hundred and seventy-seven three ninety-five over last year. So I don't know if they went, didn't go back and fix the numbers from last year or.
They had three scenarios that they gave us.
I know, she said scenario number one.
Well, scenario number one, the toll class is thirty-four thousand oh forty-five seven fifty-five.
Right, but that could've changed from when we first, their scenario number one might've changed, I have no idea. Like, we're not privy to that information. I mean, we are or we're not, and their scenario number one is not even what they're recommending. They're recommending scenario number two, we're going to scenario, well, I mean, we're gonna discuss going to scenario number one.
Add that two seventy-seven to nine oh one oh.
Two seventy-seven to nine oh one oh?
Yeah.
What's the nine oh one oh?
Nine oh one oh was the minimum, was ours on scenario one. Wasn't it?
This, I'm doing, this is how they do it.
Yeah, but if you go back to your old scenario one. And you add two seventy-seven.
The one I did before we had the meeting?
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have money.
I think, I think if you take nine oh one oh and add two seventy-seven to that, you're coming back up to the nine three, and I think for two seventy-seven was two seventy-seven above what you had. And I think the difference is where they're putting it, whether it's, I mean, the number we were talking about the other night.
This isn't the way to deal with millions of dollars to get a sheet like this tonight. This isn't the way. I talked to Fred today, okay?
And what number, yeah, but.
I talked to Fred today and I asked Fred about the amount of debt for each school. And even today, the amount of debt for each school was different today than the figures that they have been giving us all along. And I put those into my formula, and I called Janice about it and said, these figures are different, okay? And then all of a sudden we come up with this.
No, Paul, Paul.
What?
The other night while we were all sitting in the room, it's not, the two seventy-seven hasn't changed, it's, you're, you're concentrating on what their scenario was and they, and what they said the other night was that it's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars three ninety-five over what we gave last year. So what we gave last year was nine million fifty-four oh eighty-eight. If you add the two. If you add the two-seventy-seven, that's, that's nine-three-three-one-four-eight-three.
I wanna start with the total district budget, like, they gave us the other night. And we had three scenarios for the total district budget.
But we didn't go over that, that's the-
Yes, we did, we went, we, we used scenario one.
Yeah.
Those were the figures they gave us. My figures right now are matching this exactly until tonight. Okay, something's wrong, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm not voting on the school budget tonight.
We don't have to vote on the school budget tonight, we have to vote on, we have to vote on the budget as, as they recommended and, and make our changes to it.
I'm not voting, I, I personally, as a segment, I am not voting on anything unless I see the total budget that they're gonna, that they're asking for, the starting point that they've given us, they've given us, in fact, I might even have this spreadsheet here, but they've given us this over and over again, it hasn't changed, and then all of a sudden, tonight is changing?
No, it hasn't changed, Paul, you have to, it hasn't changed. What we spent last year didn't change all of a sudden, right? What we spent last year is nine million fifty-four oh eighty-eight. And what they've always said is, we want two-seventy-seven three ninety-five over last year. And that's what, that's how we're coming up with the number, nine-three-three-one-four-eight-three. I don't care what their bottom line is.
I care what their bottom line is, and I care what their top line is, to make sure that we're getting allocated properly.
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm done, I'm not gonna talk about the school budget until I have a new set of figures that match this. That's my pers- that's-
I don't know what does it match on there, you-
When they give me the figures that start off with the net requi- their, their full requirement, less their revenues, and they break up what the school needs, and then you take that and they reduce it-
So you want this sheet exactly from the other night and see where we're at?
I want whatever they're using to come up with this.
Right.
Because I'm using the exact figures from the other night, and it's not matching, it's not matching. I've gone over this over and over again, I was good with this today, I, I had no, I've been working on this since the other night. And all of a sudden, we get different figures?
No, I don't think I have a different, I don't think they're giving us a different-
Well, give us the summary sheet.
They're not giving-
Give us the summary sheet that they gave us the other night.
Right. That's what you need, you wanna see the summary sheet.
I wanna see how they, what the total budget that, that they requested, less, less the, uh, the revenues, and then what they need, because it's not coming out to this. How can, I don't understand, how can she give you this today, and?
No, well-
I'm not, I'm not going on this.
This is what I got the other night.
Yeah.
Here it is. Well, find the one you want, we're all set.
I mean, this is what I want, it's what-
Well, I mean, the, the one you're looking for, I'll put it to you that way.
What is, what is the number, what is the percentage we're looking at, forty-one, thirty-one, fifty-eight, sixty-nine, is that the percentages now?
Let me see what they have here. That's the one table we're talking about.
No, this is, it's, it's, it's-
No, this is there, this is from the other night.
I understand that, that's not, those are not-
They're like, they're on, they're never on the same page, boys. Keeps changing, it's like, like a river flowing.
Well, I don't know what the percentage is that they're working from now.
Forty-one, thirty-eight, fifty-eight, sixty-two.
Well, I'm glad you had your table.
That's what it should be.
Is that the bottom?
Forty-one, forty-one, thirty-eight, free town, fifty-eight, sixty-nine, like that.
That's right.
That's the percentage, this is what they gave us. That hasn't changed.
Well, if that hasn't changed, why would you get that sheet with no numbers?
Yeah, like you said, they just gave you, this is this, they gave you this sheet, huh?
Yes.
Plus two hundred seventy-seven over last year.
Right, that's exactly what we've been talking about, as, as a roundabout conversation.
Well, see, look, here's the sheet they gave us last night. I get, this is the sheet they gave us the last time. Twenty-one, four-three-nine, right? I don't know why they're coming up with a different-
Twenty-one, four-three-nine, two-twenty-nine. Nine oh, yeah, it's right there.
Twenty-one, four-three-nine, two-twenty-nine, then they reduced it by-
No.
Yes, they, they have to reduce it by transportation and capital, they came up with nineteen million seven-thirty-six-one-forty-four. Now, I'm matching against this sheet here, this is what they gave us for fiscal year fifteen the other night. They said ni- seven point seven oh nine million for free town is our required net school spending. Nine eight oh eight seven seven oh, okay? You add that together, it comes to seventeen million five-one-eight-three-fifty. They told us the net school spending, which is what I have here, of nine hundred and seventeen thousand seven thirty-five, and additional contribution for Lakeville is, uh, one million three hundred oh five-nine, right?
Yeah.
The difference, two-two-one-seven-seven-ninety-four, all right? That gives us a net assessment of, um, then we have to add in the transportation costs. That's my scenario, that, that's, oh, that's my scenario that they rejected.
This is what, um, no, but-
I'm using this, this is what they handed out the other night.
All right.
Maybe this.
This? No, this here, they handed out the other-
They handed us this, I don't have my pocket.
But they gave us last Wednesday night.
Okay.
They just gave the ball, and that's what he's working on.
Right here.
This one.
Yeah.
That's, make sure it says fiscal year fifteen right up here. All right?
That's the paper, I can see part of what you got there.
Fiscal year fifteen, okay.
Transportation assessment the other night. Double check, I mean, transportation, three hundred and seventy-four thousand six eighty-eight, that's the exact same thing that they have here, from Lakeville, five thirty-seven eighty-one.
Five thirty-seven eighty-one.
Right, now, the capital debt, this may be where they're making the mistake, because remember she said the capital debt had a different percentage? So let me sum what the capital debt that I'm using. And I checked this with Fred today.
The, the capital debt was three to one, wasn't it?
Well, the capital debt was, we, we, we now pick up thirty-four-
Four percent.
Thirty-four point eight-six percent, and Lakeville picks up sixty-five point one-four. I called him today, he gave me different figures on capital debt, this is what he gave me on capital debt. Let, let me add up, let me add, this is free town, let me move this down here, this is free town, this will be Lakeville, and this is what, what the district gave me today. This is what he gave me today. He gave me seven hundred and eighty-two thousand five seventy, that's what he gave me today. All right? And then, let me add this up here.
What, he gave you seven eighty?
Seven eighty-two five seventy, Fred gave me that today.
Okay.
Okay? Then I'm gonna hit that, now I'm gonna add these two up, just for the hell of it, to see if I get the sums correct. Right here, see if that comes up. Seven eighty-two five seventy. So that could be where the, well, let's see what the difference is, in what they're charging us. Let's take, they wanna give, they wanna charge us what, uh, three twenty-nine, four eighty? That's forty-six thousand three oh eight, there it is.
So it's the, it's the debt.
It's the debt, the debt they gave me today is, is different, it's lower than this debt. That's the answer, forty-six thousand three oh eight. That's why the figures aren't matching. And I called him specifically because, um, Janice said to me, "Let's double check on the debt, because we gotta be perfectly sure."
The debt is important.
It's important because we raise the expend, uh, the, uh, the excluded debt, we, we raise that in addition to the two and a half percent increase on the taxes. So that excluded debt is important, so I called Fred, he gave me the figures, and I said, "You're sure?", he said, "Yeah." I said, "The allocation is the thirty-four point eight-six, yep, there you go, there you have it." And that's the eighty-six percent, eighty, forty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you very much for having us, just mind that, huh?
No, it's okay. So is mine.
Question now, IT excluded, is that supposed to be the same thirty-four sixty-five?
No.
Cause it's not?
No, the IT, no, the thirty-four sixty-five only pertains to the schools. Not the IT debt.
Okay, all right.
Because that's, that's why it's different, the IT debt is based on the, on the allocation of, of the students.
All right, that goes back to the forty-one fifty-eight.
That's right, that's how I've got it calculated.
All right. Yeah, it's roughly, okay.
So. That's all I can tell you.
It's asked by forty-six?
Forty-six thousand dollars.
And he knows this, Fred knows this, or not?
No, we wouldn't know it, because this is, I, I just, we just got this today, just now, she just gave us-
So this is why these figures are different?
Well, that's why these figures are different than mine.
Okay.
Because if they're using those figures there, Fred changed the debt today.
Right. And he didn't make the adjustment on the numbers that he gave us.
No. I mean, you would think. You think he had the figures.
No, you know the background, so that's why I don't believe in it.
So, in other words, they, they are starting with the same scenario, and they're starting with, uh, scenario one, thirty-four million forty-five thousand seven fifty-five, they haven't changed that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now, if we work out the debt issue, I mean, if Fred comes back and says he made a mistake, then it's gonna be another forty-six thousand dollars, but that's okay. All he cares about is using the right numbers.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
So you wanna start over again?
Well, I mean-
All right, so we're talking, after we had our meeting the other night, we've been going back and forth with the school department. Right now, Lakeville's pushing for a level, uh, for scenario number two, and we're so far sticking with scenario number one. In scenario number one, there'll be no layoffs, class sizes will remain the same.
There can't be any layoffs anymore. They haven't sent, it's too late, they haven't sent her any notices.
No, they, they have time.
Now, according to the schools, I called them, asked them.
No, I talked to her today, she's ready to have, the, the letters are ready to go out, they have a, a, a date, I think it's May fifteenth or May something, that they have to submit the letters by. They have a, a school committee meeting on Wednesday.
Uh-huh, well.
And-
I know, May first was the cutoff, supposedly.
Well, let me ask you, uh, the scenario one, there's no layoffs?
Scenario number one, there's no layoffs, so-
So my question is, if they're talking two, we're talking one, and there's no layoffs with one, why are they sitting on letters?
There-
There aren't gonna be any layoffs either way. Am I right, or am I missing something?
No, if, if Lakeville goes with scenario number two, and we stick with scenario number one, then there possibly could be layoffs, right? Cause then we'll end up at a joint town meeting. But right now, right now, the school committee is, is going to work on the budget on Wednesday. There has been conversations back and forth between the superintendent and the town of Lakeville, and the only thing that Lakeville's concerned about is what they promised in the override, is that class sizes remain the same, and that there wouldn't be any layoffs, and if, if they, if they can hear that from the superintendent, then they will go with scenario number one.
Is that what she's gonna do?
She's been talking to him, right, right now, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
But she knows that we're at scenario number one. If, if you can hold at bay any layoffs, and you can reduce, not reduce class size, but maintain class size the way it is, then, and you have a new guy coming in, I mean, why would you wanna give him anything more and not know what's gonna happen?
As an aside, I don't, I don't, I don't think any town should look for an override and make promises that, that the other town has to live up to. If we get an override, I promise you the-
Especially, especially when they can get along with scenario one and not have to do-
Firstly, I'm not concerned, it's more of a little scenario, I'm just concerned that a town, or wants an override and makes all these promises, that it's, it's not all up to them, it's up to another town as well.
Right.
And I don't think neither town should do something like that.
No, you're right.
That's all I'm saying.
Scenario one is for us, a million dollars over in this school's budget?
Scenario one for us is-
It was seven hundred thousand last year, plus two-seventy-seven, million bucks.
It's, it, it, scenario number one is, uh, over our required spending.
Right.
It's nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Nine hundred thousand, Lakeville's is gonna be a million?
Three, million three.
So.
No.
I'll be very honest with you. Boy, the budget going up two point three million dollars, and, and, oh my God, there's gonna be no layoffs. Their budget's increasing by how many percentages, Paul? What's, what's, what's that, four, three, four percent?
If they went to scenario two?
Listen, scenario one-
I, I know, I just wanted to know-
But, but-
Scenario two would go up for free town, would go to one million seventy-two thousand dollars, and Lakeville would go to one million five hundred thousand.
I guess my point was-
Five hundred ninety.
My point is, we're gonna give them two million dollars more than they got last year. Am I right or am I wrong? Or two million dollars over in that school spending.
Between the two towns?
Between the two towns.
That scenario one?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. That scenario two, they're gonna get two and a half million.
I get it, no, we're treating them very well with scenario one.
You have to understand that there's never going to be a time when they don't get over. They're never, it, it will never ever go backwards, it doesn't matter if there's only three kids in that school, it will never-
I guess my point, all my point was, is scenario one, they're treating, the towns are treating the school system very, very well.
We've always been, we've always been very generous as far as the schools are concerned, I think everybody, every superintendent's pretty much said so, as they believe in.
As they believe in, that's the opposite word, yeah.
Scenario, scenario one is two point two million dollars over the required spending for the two towns.
Yeah, I get it.
And you know-
And they've got one point one million in E and D.
Yeah, they'll, they're using, what did they say, nine hundred?
Three hundred thousand.
Well, they're taking three hundred out, but that's, appears somewhere.
They're taking three hundred thousand out of E and D.
So just, I mean, just think of it in those terms, I mean, in order for them to have that money in E and D, they were funded to begin with.
No.
No?
No, I'll tell you what, um, I'll-
Good planning?
No, we're here. There are other, there are other functions in the school that make money for the, for the school, so-
Right, but E and D is really, in essence, their free cap.
Very free.
And they can, but they, legally, they can keep, uh-
Five percent.
Five percent.
Yeah.
Which increases every time you increase that budget. Absolutely.
No matter how you look at it, it's taxpayer money, no matter how you cut the mustard, it's taxpayer money. And, you know, having that kind of money into a slush fund is basically what it is. You know, we wouldn't allow that with any other department and town, just wouldn't, we wouldn't stand for it. And we're, we're, we're leery about revendicating funds. But since they're a separate entity, they get, they get to have over a million dollars in a slush fund. You know, the only reason that they don't use it for personnel is because we call- Huh?
Let's not call it a slush fund.
Why, well, it's what it is, it's a slush fund.
Well, they're using money this year to spend down on, on what we could give them, so I mean, it's not like they're going out and buying equipment or anything else, like-
They don't have, they got everything they need. They got a million dollars for, for computers that aren't booked up yet. They got, you know, they, they, there's nothing they don't have, I believe, whatever they want, they get.
Well, they still got a wish list for more, if they wanted to go to three, for instance.
Oh, yeah.
What are we gonna do?
Well, listen.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna like, we don't wanna be here all night long, so, look, this is the way it's gonna go, either we're gonna go to scenario number one-
Agreed.
And, and hope, hope that Lakeville goes along with scenario number one, or I don't think there's any appetite here to go to scenario number two.
We're gonna take a vote now, okay?
We're gonna go, we have to take a vote on everything.
I, I don't have, personally, I don't have any issue going with scenario one if everybody's in agreement with that. But we gotta resolve the forty-six thousand.
Okay, so we'll, we can vote on scenario number one contingent upon-
Forty-six.
The forty-six thousand dollars.
If everybody's in agreement.
If everybody's in agreement.
We can't shy away from the forty-six thousand, they gotta come up with the right figures.
Everybody good with that?
All right.
All right.
Is my board good with that, scenario one, number one, if the figures are correct on the forty-six thousand?
Basically, we're being forced into it, so.
I'm not forcing you, I'm a tenet then. I'll kick down the table and I'll bite your ear off.
Is that your final answer?
Is that what we're trying to end up?
What we're trying to end up is not going to a joint town meeting, so we're forced, not forced into scenario three.
Okay.
All right. So, if, I don't wanna open up a Pandora's box, however, the vote that I'm gonna cast and that we're gonna cast is based upon what? Because to approve or deny, because we don't know the nuts and bolts, so it's basically, well, we're gonna, this is what we want, and we just like it, or we don't like it, we don't know why-
and we just like it or we don't like it, we don't know why, we don't know...
Yeah, we already had that meeting.
It's scenario number one, the question, the only question is whether it's forty-six thousand dollars more or not?
They came in and did a whole presentation, and they gave us their plan and...
This was a while, okay.
Yeah, this was a while ago. So, worth of the schools is, is like a three-month ordeal. One more.
Although, although according to Tom Byron, right?
Unfortunately, they have to have the budget, but they're doing it personally.
They can actually automatically go to last year's.
Scenario one, if there's some level services. Scenario two, gave them level services plus some additional security stuff or something else.
Okay.
And then level three was hiring additional staff, plus it was including level one and two.
Okay, so our board is in favor.
Well, do you wanna go, uh, how are we doing this? Wanna go right down the line again, or...
The articles and everything?
Yeah, we're voting on a budget, we've had changes in this.
All right, we, we had to take care of the school before we...
Well, no, we wanted to, but, so, we'll just move on.
Well, we're good with, well...
We're good with that, right?
Yeah, good with that, so I just, the only thing that has to resolve is the forty-six thousand.
We're gonna vote on everything else together. We'll vote on everything else together.
We just wanna make sure we have the right things.
Do we, do we have the, the new articles printed out? I thought...
Yeah, you have them all.
Sweetheart, I took hearing.
Right there.
Ally took hearing.
Okay.
Thank God for Ally.
Yep.
So, what are you gonna do, the special town first?
No, you wanna go over...
I don't care where we start, as long as I know where it is.
All right, let's not do the articles first, let's stop, do the budget first, because there's gonna be some reductions needed, I'm, I'm assuming.
Maybe what page you're on and what are...
Starting with town moderator.
Why don't you just, why don't we go over the changes? Why don't you tell us what, what changes? Because I gotta put them on this sheet, because the other sheet's now falling.
This sheet is the good one.
Doesn't matter, I wanna know what the numbers, tell me what the changes are.
Look, this is everything that you need to know, the requested of the, by each department,
and what, what's being recommended so far by the whole group.
So what number we are?
We're gonna start with line...
Am I missing something on this, or didn't you print it over? Why is it that I didn't have that?
You did.
This year, well, second.
Yeah, we're gonna go right down the line.
That's the budget, that's the latest, that matches what I have on it.
Right, you, you turn up?
No.
The third page I got is STM.
Keep on. One more.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go.
That's the budget.
That's it.
Okay, here we go. Town moderator, four thirteen. Selectmen, sixty-four, one eighty-two.
Huh?
No, we're in seventy-seven, six fifty-seven. Administrator, one thirty-three, six thirteen. We're gonna go over again.
You want to follow it?
Bincom, one mil, one...
No, that's not...
No, where are, that's not where I... One thirty-nine, four thirteen.
One thirty-three.
One thirty-three, six thirteen.
When you do this, sweetheart, thank you, can you just bold the, bold the last line, so I'm not confused?
Oh, yeah, one thirty-nine.
It is, one thirty-nine, four thirteen, it's bold.
Yeah.
I know, so it's one thirty-three, six thirteen.
He'd like it better with a two.
Well, yeah, because that's how, that's how, that's because that's the summary of personnel versus the sum...
Baby me.
Why don't you just italicize, italicize what it says totally?
Remind me this year.
Baby me.
Total finance committee.
Finance, you can't mistake that one, one thousand dollars.
Is that a piece or for all of them?
They don't get anything.
All right, reserve fund, one twenty-five.
Okay.
Town accountant, one oh seven, five thirty-six. Audit, twenty thousand. Assessors, eighty-seven, nine thirty-eight. Treasurer, did we fix that?
Yes, we did. You see, as you go down the line, the request was sixty-three thousand, one thirty-eight.
Wait, wait, would I skip?
We changed it back to what she wanted, we get sixty-one thousand, nine hundred.
Um, second line on the top of the sheet.
Where is it? Uh, one thirty-eight, oh one, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's the personnel cost.
She requested sixty-three, one thirty-eight.
Right.
We, we put it back down to sixty-one now.
Okay.
So, one seventy-one...
Oh eight-three.
Oh eight-three. Legal fees, forty-five. Okay, management, info systems, with the changes, sixty-one-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the total is, is eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand. Okay.
Um, tax title, sixty-five. Town clerk, ninety-seven, seven twenty-three. No questions?
Ninety-seven?
Ninety-two, seven twenty-three. I have a question. No, I don't. Take it back. This is what, what number does this represent, the forty-nine, one ninety-five?
The number she requested.
Which is what percent range? The three?
No, I think hers was two.
Two?
Yes, hers was two, when we've been applying.
Does that mean you're gonna, does that, does that mean everybody's gonna go to two?
Here's a, that's a question. Some people have three, some people have one, one seven.
Well, there's only two people that made a request other than what we've been applying. Town clerk and the highway surveyor. Town clerk requested two percent, highway surveyor requested, I believe, three percent.
Three percent.
Okay, but when you did your... When you did your...
Yeah, we dropped the three, yeah.
When I did my computation, I put in what those two elected officials requested, in case it gets passed at the town hall, I mean, at the town meeting.
All right, but we need to make a recommendation, so we're recommending one makes two percent, one makes three percent?
Who can give me the figure that you want? I mean, I don't care, whatever you put in here. For recommendation, but...
Okay, but, all right, on this warrant article here that you changed, that you submitted, the one with, so what are, what are those?
I put in what they requested, because they're the ones that made the request. But we can put anything that we want, and that's what this is about tonight.
All right, so here's my thing. Everybody should know one person is better than another, and everybody should be on the same playing field.
I agree.
So whether we go to two percent, one point seven five percent, because, you know, we're not supposed to tie into the contracts. We only tie into them when it's good, we don't tie into them when it's bad.
Listen, uh, I agree. Uh, the thing is that Jackie is an elected official, she does her own thing.
Okay, so what's, what's, I guess, what's the board's recommendation?
I can give you, I can, in a second, I can tell you what the figure would be if you kept it consistent with everybody else. Wait one second.
I don't know what you guys are thinking, which are questions.
So, in, in the town clerk's case, it was four-eight, two-thirty a year. Now multiply that by the factor I've been using. So it would be forty-nine, oh seventy-four. She's requested forty-nine, one ninety-five. So she's requesting, what, well, a hundred and twenty bucks more than what we're recommending, so, what we've been doing. So, whatever you guys wanna do, just let me know, I'll put it in here.
She's requesting three percent, wasn't it?
No, she's requesting two.
Two.
And we've been applying one point seven five percent, because that is what the employees...
It's a common theme.
It's the common theme.
She's a hundred dollars, she's a hundred dollars over that, pretty much.
Yeah, so...
But what's last time they were raised?
Huh?
Last year.
She got one last year.
Town clerk last year.
And so then the highway surveyor, and they both got them up.
Then I, I would go along with whatever you guys got.
Uh, I, I would say one point seven five, huh?
All right, so then...
So our recommendation...
Will be...
One point seven five.
Would be forty-nine, oh seventy-four. I'm gonna change our recommendation to forty-nine, oh seventy-four. But for computation purposes, is that your recommendation, finance committee?
Yes, yeah.
Forty-nine, oh seventy-four, okay. There you go.
It's unanimous, I believe.
All right, now we can go our way down.
What's the bottom line?
The bottom line for her is now ninety-two, six oh two.
Okay. All right. primaries and elections, fifteen, oh sixty-three. Registrs, five thousand two. Conservation commission, ten thousand. Did it number forty-eight?
No, you bring it up.
We ended up at ten, but it was discussed today.
Yeah, I think we said to leave it at ten because of everything, there's more stuff coming up. I remember being left as ten. We, we discussed going to eight, but then we left it at ten.
Okay.
Because they have more, uh, more things coming up.
It was the percentages that, of increase that we were concerned about, with the dollar value, actually, when you start looking at. The way they shifted over, the difference of two thousand dollars, I think, in the long run, where they would have to come back and come back.
Yeah, they'd be coming back, that's what I hear.
Planning board, forty-six, seven twenty-five. Zoning board of appeals, twenty-seven hundred. Soil board, one thousand fifty-three. Public buildings and maintenance, sixty-eight, nine, ten.
Now, did, does people have, yeah, still break down on that? It's right there?
No, you're thinking of the other one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Cal, cal, approve that.
All right. Uh, property insurance, one oh two, three fifty. Printing of the reports, thirty-five hundred. So what's the final number on...
I have, um, one million, two, one, four, 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 five.
Okay.
That takes into consideration...
The increase was...
Eighty-five, yeah.
IT, yeah, IT was...
Okay.
Okay, total police, one, six, seven, four, eight, six, four.
Right, and Carlton had, remember the last time we were here, it was in the, I mentioned to Carlton that his line item was overstated, and he, he acknowledged that, he sent me an email and said, you're right, and so we reduced it. So, the figure that you just said is exact, is correct.
Do we have, um...
That was his original request, one, six, seven, four.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
No, it was a couple of thousand, thousand fifteen hundred.
Yeah, it was about twelve hundred over, I think. He adjusted it down. He adjusted it down.
Do you have his total figure from last year with you?
I might, I might. Total figure from last year? What, the general government? Total budget for the police department.
Oh, police?
So, uh...
That'll be in the big one there.
Total budget for the police department. One million, six hundred, twelve thousand, five, seventy-four, sixty.
They get a pretty good increase there.
Uh, token sixty-two thousand dollars.
Two dollars, come on, coin bill.
Of course, they got, they got, also, they got...
You got uniform and...
Well, no, they also got contractual, contractual raises. I mean, you're talking big bucks, we can talk the police department, because wherever the contractual rate that goes to base salary, propagates to, uh, to differential and overtime, yeah.
Plus, we had a couple of guys with your education.
Education, yeah.
One of those is like twelve thousand bucks, for degrees or something.
Yeah.
All right, total communications, two fifty-eight, five fifty-three.
Okay.
Total fire, nine seventy-six, three ninety-two. Paul, do you have last year's number? Sorry.
I better leave last year's open.
You better leave it open.
Eight fifty-four?
God, now, every time I open it, it, it changes position.
Oh, I know why. This is, guys, this is what we have to make a note of. What is it?
Hold on, I gotta find it. Whenever I change something, uh...
You had it eight fifty-four?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Let me get down the, who are we looking for fire?
Two forty-one. It's in your big book there somewhere.
Yeah, we want, you wanna know what last year was?
Yeah.
Total fire was nine forty-four, one eighty-eight.
Yeah.
That's the current year's budget.
All right, make sure we make a note that their budget should go down next year, because this is the off year for the training.
Training or something, yes.
You know?
So I think it goes down next year, like...
Yeah, this is the big research year.
Twenty-something.
Twenty or twenty-five, something.
Yeah, it's the big research year.
Right. Total building, nine one, nine five five. Now, does this fix the secretaries?
Who was that? Yes.
Okay, nine one, nine five five.
Total buildings, huh?
She has to be fixed to secretary.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see it there.
Okay, gas, eighty-eight fifty. Plumbing, fifty-nine thirty. Ways and measures, four. Electrical, thirteen, six eighty. That is a crazy number.
It's 'cause he's doing a lot of inspections.
Uh...
Thirteen, sixteen. We usually spend five thousand.
Yeah, but they always came back twice. Almost every year they came back.
Yeah, we need to keep...
Oh eight, oh seven, oh eight, did they come back, 'cause there was nothing they had built, but, you know what I mean? Years previous to that, they took...
They showed up on the last year's budget, on the last year's budget, which is...
Not to know, we need to do that. That's what we need to do for next year.
That's what I'm saying.
How many requests come in now?
They have to initiate.
But it would be one time thing, or...
The electrical part.
Right.
We still wanna follow the percentages.
Total EMA, twenty-two, six.
It's taken our life...
Bar, right. Is everybody all right with that?
Yep.
I'm ready to chop it. Animal control, sorry, five, thirty-five, six thirty-two. Questions, Mr. Allison?
Again, there's another, another budget, this is like the cemetery budget, and it went from eight dollars to forty-seven thousand dollars.
It's funny, that's how I feel about the electrical, and you feel that way, but, no, I hear you.
You know, just, you know, when you look at the, when you look at this budget, you go, you know...
Well, listen, you put on a, basically, almost a full-time...
I got it, I got that part.
Okay.
But, but still, you know, you start looking at vehicles, you start looking at other supplies, you start looking at office supplies, you start looking at... Now we're talking computers, now we're talking, it's gonna take on a life of its own, and it's only gonna go up, up...
I'm gonna apply for the job.
Yeah. Total forestry, sixteen, seven fifty. We...
Hey, we cut it.
Yeah.
We cut it from twenty-one, five, to sixteen, seven.
No, I thought we were gonna cut it even more than that.
How can we cut it more?
No.
Okay.
No, you don't wanna do that, 'cause you'd have to cut something else out.
We just had a power outage.
Again, and it just...
You did? I didn't. You gotta live in mind.
It did.
I, I would, you know, when it gets to that particular point, I wouldn't be...
Did you lost your power there?
Oh, that day, and I lost my computer, remember?
Oh, yeah.
The problem is, you know, you, you know, these guys have to make a decision.
I should mention this, just so everybody knows.
We want him to work in town.
Oh, yes.
Well, it's gotta, you gotta have it.
When the tree went down, it went down on a transformer around a corner from my house, and I heard it sounded like somebody set off a bomb, and I went...
That's what they do, sound like, yeah, I bet it happened.
So I called the police department, I said, if there's a cruiser around here, have it drive around, because it sounded like a bomb went off.
Yeah.
He calls me back, and he says, no, a tree fell on a transformer, it was a transformer. But he called me back, gave me an update, he says, yeah, it was a so-and-so and so. But he had everybody...
You know why? I had beat into the punch, because I...
Of course you did.
I did, because I lost my hand.
You know what, I thought about it ten minutes, and I said, maybe I go to, there may be somebody, you know, a house burning down somewhere 'cause of gas. You know what, I thought about it ten minutes, and I said, maybe I go to, there may be somebody, you know, house burning down somewhere 'cause of gas.
You know where the transformer went? Oh, one oh five.
Yeah.
And I lost my computer. I had to go get a new power supply for the computers. And I'd be submitting a bill to the.
As a matter of fact, he did mention something about grandfather say that called him. Got a part of this wrong.
Okay, forty-four, twenty-four, School Committee, Staples, free town.
There, man, you missed having a master.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
I want that job.
Yeah. And we got a total on public safety. Was anything we changed or that?
Yeah, you want it?
Yeah.
Three million, one-oh-nine, three-oh-six.
Okay, didn't change, all right. All right.
Okay, School Committee, forty-four, twenty-four. How do you wanna work this?
What do you mean?
Do you wanna change?
Zero.
The school.
Zero. Change the school committee?
No.
Oh, what, what do you wanna change? The three town?
Yeah.
No, it stay, I mean, those figures are picked up from the, the spreadsheet that I was dealing with before. That's, those are the figures unless they, unless they come back and say the figures that Fred gave me today are incorrect, like forty-six thousand. I mean.
So we're on the statements. Statements are all right, we're on the next one.
Yeah, she said the statements are, she didn't wanna cut the statements. You guys wanna go to zero?
Well, we tried last year to.
Oh, I thought Bob was talking about the school budget thing, zero bucks.
Well.
I mean, less than zero. You'd have to pay us money.
Unless I lost a few bucks.
All right, so, what do you wanna do here?
Well, what's the figure, is this the figure we need?
It just doesn't make any sense. Why, why is one town paying zero? We're paying forty, forty-four, twenty-five.
I know, and I'm not talking about that.
Can we use?
I've done that.
Can we use this figure with a caveat that we need to know what the forty-six thousand bucks is?
Yeah, once the party, once they tell me that the, that the figures that they gave me today are incorrect, and they give me.
But we can use this number.
I plug a bit, it'll come back.
We can use that number with a caveat, and then adjust it up or down, forty-six.
Right, let's use this one here, and it'll go up or down.
Is everybody good with that?
I think we said at the beginning.
Yeah.
Well, we have to vote on the number, we have to vote on a budget tonight. How do you?
I'm gonna vote on this budget. Me, I'm voting on what they gave me today. That's what I'm doing. That's it. I mean, if they can't get their numbers correct, Lisa.
All right, so your bottom number is how much?
Nine, nine thousand, I mean, nine million, two hundred and fifty.
Eighty-five thousand, one seventy-four.
One seventy-four.
Okay, that's what they're on the.
Is the Finance Committee in agreement on this?
There is a forty-six more.
Forty-six thousand more.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they come back tomorrow, it's forty-six more for us. If they come back tomorrow and say, you know, I made a mistake, they made a mistake on what they gave me today, then we can adjust it.
We can add more, we can take it away, but we can't add more.
Well, I'm not gonna, I don't, I'm not gonna vote to put it in, 'cause I checked with these people today. That's it. I mean, that's, that's my vote. I'm one vote, you got a whole mess of people.
Anytime it's less, I'm, I'm your guy.
We're not one board, we're two boards, okay, so.
Well, I, I'm one vote on, on the floor. Okay, let's just go for procedures. If we approve that nine million, two eighty-five, and it turns out that forty-six is right, then what needs to be done?
I don't know if.
'Cause we'd have to go up.
I don't think you can, I think you can.
You can vote for reconsideration.
You can vote to go up.
Trust me, anything go up, getting, getting.
Getting to go down, that's the hard part.
That's not what we're talking about. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, we're talking about voting on a number.
Right.
And I'm saying, if we vote on the number that's here right now.
You can change that number on the floor.
And the forty-six thousand turns out to be accurate, what is the procedure to increase this? That we have to meet again to prove it, or is it?
Yeah, we have to meet again to.
Again, you have to make it with a caveat that, you know, go either way with the forty-six thousand.
No, she said you didn't have to.
But my point is that you could change that number on the floor.
You can change that number on the floor.
You can always go up, but you can't take it away.
No, the opposite.
What?
It can always go down, but you can't add to it.
Well, the, the school department has come in many times and not having the right figure, and on the floor they tell us what the right figure.
Oh, yeah.
Right, they go down, they don't go up.
Well, what do you wanna do? Wanna add the forty-six?
No.
It's easy.
I don't, I don't think, I, I think, I think if they didn't give you the right figures, I have to check it two hundred times.
No, but, wait, wait, and that's not really, that, we're seeing almost the same thing, but not true, okay? Because the superintendent has always said, two seventy-seven, three ninety-five, over what you spent last year, which was nine oh five four oh eight eight. That's what she said. The debt changed, okay? The debt changed today. So either she gave me the paper before she talked to Fred, and the, and the debt thing went on. So that's where the court, that's where the miscommunication is. So I don't wanna be sitting here saying they gave us wrong numbers, and the numbers are changing, blah, blah, blah. The debt changed because of whatever the percentage changed, so the debt changed.
Well, we can approve, again, we could approve, approve this figure with stipulating regarding the debt, so that if the debt is, could be added, we can put that stipulation in this vote right now. So that it's not a big rigmarole after.
Come on, we're muted here. I, 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 my own, my own, I think we just vote for this budget the way it is, and then, you know, we're not gonna have a town meeting tomorrow. If it needs to be corrected, we just.
No, these have to be, what is the last date for this? I have to print the, on the budgets, so that they're on, available to the public fourteen days, so that's what, the nineteenth, or sixteenth of May or nineteenth of May?
Why don't we just take a vote?
But that's, they have to be printed.
So we got two weeks?
Yeah, we can meet, we can get within two weeks.
Yeah, but you, she's got, can we do this? How about doing this? Let's add in the debt that they had before, before today, okay? Let's add that in, let's add the forty-six thousand in. And if they verify that the debt is lower, we don't have to come back and meet, we'll, we'll take a double vote, we'll say if it's low, we'll adjust it lower. You wanna do that?
Sounds bad when it comes to him, I guess.
No, I'm saying you weren't. I'm just, but, listen, my own personal opinion is when you call for the vote, I'm voting no.
Look, look, listen.
Okay, because I think things should be okay.
All right, we can vote on this. If we can verify the numbers tomorrow, we have a meeting on Friday, we can vote on the, on the school budget on Friday.
How about these guys? I mean, I, I can't believe that they would, I mean, I called them specifically today, I just can't believe that they would come, you walk in tonight with a piece of paper that's different. This doesn't make any sense.
I think she just took, I think she just took what we spent last year, nine oh five four, and added the two seventy-seven, two oh five.
Maybe that's what she did.
I think that's what she did.
But you know what? But it doesn't work out that way. It doesn't work out that way. And how can you come in, how can anybody give you just these figures? Here, 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 town, free town, this is what you're gonna pay.
Kind of lackluster.
Come on.
Now, I'm thinking we should vote for this number.
The, the number we have?
Yep.
All right, I, I, I'll go with that. I mean, I hate.
This is what's gonna happen. They're gonna ask what we voted on, we're gonna tell them, and it's gonna, it's gonna push the other town to say, look, they couldn't even go to level, level one. As long, if you put the forty-six thousand, you can just lower it. If you keep the, if you don't put the forty-six thousand, then it kinda sends a message like, uh.
It's five.
I don't know. I, I don't know. I.
On the other hand, he put forty-six thousand in, and they say, yeah, that's right. Well, that's what they're gonna do, okay?
Oh, you're not gonna let them get away with that.
Yeah, that's right. Look, I don't care, let me tell you something. I mean, today, I, when I called them, I was just wanting to make sure that whatever my figures were, they were accurate.
Right, I know, Paul.
Okay? That's all I want.
The nine-one-five-six-six-two-oh is their recommended, recommended budget?
The other thing is that, you know, if we went with these figures here, they, they can't say that we're not going with figure one, we're saying, we're gonna go with figure one, whatever the accurate number is. We're not against figure one, which one's accurate.
Right.
I got nine-two, two-eight-five, is that, and it's changed from that, it's low?
No, it's forty-six thousand more.
They're looking for more.
Forty-six thousand more to that. You know what? Let me take these out. Let me take these out.
Forty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money. It's like, you know, it's like a couple, a couple of people in.
Well, it's forty-six on our side, but what is, it's how much on their side?
Nothing. It's more for us.
That was the, that was the thing. We're getting forty-six thousand more than they are. At least that's what I thought.
If that's what it looks like. We go down on this number, it's gonna cost them more, bottom line.
Why don't we just hold off on the whole regional school district?
Why? I can put it in, I'll put it in right now.
And then figure that, and get back and talk to them again tomorrow.
And if I plug it in right now, the problem is, it's. Hold on. Hold on, let me do this. Well, what hurts to know, you, you're also gonna have to meet again, that's for sure. So, your boss, why don't we just go with what's here and then? Let me, hold on, just have it go up or go off?
Your indoctrination in the finance committee.
This is called.
It's a lot more than pretty faces.
Small-town.
You know, what this boils down to.
They drive us crazy.
What it boils down to, it's plain and simple. It boils down to the fact that.
We don't get accurate figures.
Okay.
Are we meeting again a couple of weeks, joint boards, or we?
No.
Or is this, this is gonna be the full town meeting, bottom line?
Okay. So we can't even vote. Well, we're gonna have to vote on the whole general budget.
Well, if we had to, we could.
With the.
Yeah, if we have to, we can meet, but.
It's not a big stretch, I mean, we got two weeks here, Jesus.
Well, we could get some requests, I might have to call for a meeting, you know.
Yeah, well.
We could get.
Isn't it apropos, after all the BS we went through trying to figure out how the finance is gonna come down, now here we are.
When's the next one?
It's forty-five.
Monday?
Okay, we gotta be careful about saying missed figures.
Well, it is, they're wrong.
I wanna, I wanna certified stamp from them, that's what I want. I wanna certified stamp saying these are the actual numbers.
Monday, that's Monday?
Nineteen.
That's next Monday?
No, no, two more, two more Mondays.
You, you don't meet again, this time, when they're all?
May nineteenth. And that's when you need them by? Doesn't it have, have to be posted? They have to be out by May nineteenth.
That's what I said, if you're gonna meet next Monday, we could just go with these figures, and Monday we'd vote to make the adjustment, whatever, up or down, or whatever, whatever.
I see him figures for a second.
All right, look, let's, let's move on, seriously, just waste of time, let's just, let's get it, well, we can, we can look at the rest of it, come back to.
Well, well, we're gonna hold off on it.
Listen, you guys do what you have to do, I have to figure this out if you want a halfway decent figure, okay? I mean, I'm gonna have it come up.
Leave it, leave it that way, and we'll talk to them tomorrow. I, I, I know you wanna try to figure it out, but you know with the forty-six, the forty-six is part of the debt, right? So that's, that's what you have to talk to Chris and Fred tomorrow about.
Just tell me being taped, you know, this is going to the Attorney General, is this the real number?
And instead of taking a vote on that part of it, we'll just hold off on, on the school, so we're not, we're not doing anything one way or the other.
I gotta, I'm gonna put it back together. If I don't put it back together, it's gonna be all screwed up.
Okay.
All right, you wanna work on that?
Yeah.
Is this number rigid for Bristol County?
Yes, both of them.
Both of them are correct? Old Colony, too?
Right.
Okay.
How many kids does she?
Excuse me?
How many kids does she have? Ninety?
Ninety.
That's low, lower.
Eighteen, what's that?
Ninety.
Crystal Aggie was eighteen?
It's a total educational request, I found.
Yep, total educational.
Now, will we adjust the?
It wasn't enough, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, we did.
I mean, on this figure.
Well, yeah, we had to, we had to.
No, I mean, tonight.
From his request, he's done, it was four sixty-five, he's done a three eighty-nine, two seven, two forty-seven. He had built in two guys, he had built in uniforms.
No, no, I'm talking about the, plus the raise.
Right, we have to change the raise, that's why I'm waiting for Paul.
Oh, that's on an article.
Huh? No, we're gonna change it in here, too. Yeah, I'm waiting for you.
So we say we keep them all consistent?
Yeah.
We're just changing our recommendations.
Well, salaries, electric.
Right, right, right.
But you see, is, is the request of sixty-two, did that have the three built into it?
Yes.
What do you have for last year?
I'm just getting a whole budget book here.
Right here, well.
That was last year?
That was voted last year.
Sixty thousand, one-two-twelve?
Yeah. So, three percent, another eighteen hundred, that's where he's, um.
Right.
That's where he's at there.
So we have to multiply that one, it's one point seven five percent. No, one point seven five.
Oh, all right, one point seven five, all right. I should give this, uh, correct number.
Okay.
What was it last year, sixty-two?
No, sixty thousand, two-hundred-and-twelve.
Right.
That's a salary available.
Yeah.
Times one point seven percent.
Seven five.
Seven five percent.
Yep. I just got them in.
We were on six, sixty-one, seven? No.
Sixty-one, two-six-six.
All right. Yeah, that's missed.
Thousand fifty bucks, give or take, I guess.
Yeah.
Is everybody all right with everything that's on there?
Yeah.
We're going through there.
Yeah, so what we reduce this budget by?
What do we come up with for a total for thousands?
Highway survey is what?
Six, six-one-two-six-six.
Six-one-two-six-six.
Yep.
Highway survey, six-one-two-six-six.
Yeah.
Yep.
Does that make my own line?
I mean, we, uh, three hundred.
You guys want, uh?
Yeah.
Three hundred for salaries?
No, just.
You gotta take a thousand fifty-four off of.
The salaries, uh, total is three hundred, ten thousand, one forty-nine, seventy-five. And the bottom line is three hundred eighty-eight thousand, four ninety-six, seventy-five.
Again, Paul, three eighty-eight?
Three eighty-eight, four ninety-four, seventy-five.
Okay.
Okay, Snow Nice, a hundred.
What is it?
Snow Nice.
Number one, what's that?
Oh, okay.
Three eighty-eight, four ninety-four, point seventy-five. School Nice?
Street Lightning, eleven.
Yeah.
Total Trash, four oh two, six fifty. Transfer, one forty-five oh one. Is your favorite cemetery?
Transfer, one forty-five?
One forty-five oh one.
Okay.
Cemetery, eleven, three fifty.
Jesus.
I lost you on transfer station here.
Total Transfer Station, one hundred forty thousand, five hundred and one.
Next page, Brad, I think.
Right above Cemetery.
Okay, I got it, all right.
The gas can go from one cemetery to another, I bet you.
This guy's smiling.
No, I was kidding.
I don't know. In state travel, one fifty. What's in state travel, one fifty? Asking me? How would I know? Maybe they go to a meeting somewhere.
Seminar.
A seminar.
Imagine.
Who knows?
Did you do the total for the public courts?
Will we have enough come in one time, what we were saying?
We're gonna finish Cemetery yet, Friday.
He explained it when he was here.
Professional and technical math assistance, two thousand, I have no idea. He can't move the line item anyway, so, unless he comes running for a transfer of line item.
Right.
And they.
We're talking a hundred fifty bucks here.
No, two thousand.
Two thousand, professional mapping.
Professional and technical map assistance.
He can use that money, though, he can use it anywhere in expenses. He doesn't have to get, he only has to get a transfer if it's between personnel and, and other expenses.
And he doesn't have personnel, so it's.
What did you get last year?
Two thousand.
Huh?
That same line was two thousand, but.
Oh, no, I thought you, I meant, like, what did you get for the whole budget last year?
Whole, whole budget last year was ten thousand. He's up to like eleven, three fifty.
You got one more cemetery that you had to do somehow, rather.
That's where, that's where the map assistance comes in.
Yeah.
Fighting cemeteries.
Look, no, Richmond, here's what jumped up. He, he went from Richmond Cemetery, go twelve hundred, to Richmond Cemetery, twenty-five fifty. That's the thirteen hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Because he had another cemetery and he put it in Richmond because he didn't have a separate line item.
That's, that's what he did and.
I think next year, though, he didn't come in this year, but I think next year, we need to know what this mapping, type of boom.
Oh, he was here, Michael McHugh was here.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, you were here.
Really?
Yeah.
He sat right over Lee's and.
We're here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't remember talking about the maps.
But it was probably around eleven thirty, right?
Well, the cemetery's gonna be repaid.
Could've been about the end of it.
Yeah, plus they, they started doing another one.
Wow, that's more.
Off of Middle World Road or something that.
All right, total public works.
Total public works, one million.
Internet expenses.
Fifty-three thousand, nine nine five, seventy-five. What's that?
Just, just council on agent, we'll get to it, I guess.
Okay, total health, seventy-eight, four seventeen. Okay, total COA, one twenty-eight, nine fifty-five.
Vehicular supplies, vehicular.
There was a, um.
Wait, they, their budget was one twenty-six and we put it up to one twenty-eight?
We, uh, there was a question, there was a question on a council on agent on internet expenses, is that for their computers, five thousand dollars?
That's crazy money.
Where do you see it?
For any kind of internet, T one, high speed, that's still ridiculous.
Halfway down the expenses.
They don't, they don't have a T one line.
No, I know, I just have never seen a bill that high for any five thousand today.
I think, I bet you any money that's in the long call. I think it's printing, it's printing the newsletter.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes more sense.
It's printing the newsletter.
Yeah, they don't do it for free, they do it in the house, but I mean, you got supplies, machine, the whole there.
Nope, that's fine. Just caught my eye, I don't know why.
Their budget actually.
And that's good.
Did they give you any process?
I think the increase was when you allocated her salary.
Newsletter by the state.
So we increased their.
There are some contributions, but I don't know how it relates to the five thousand. You know, it says in somewhere, paying part by whatever.
Their request was one twenty-six, one sixty-three. Our recommendation is one twenty-eight, nine fifty-five, what would it?
That's the salary item, top line. It's somewhere in this paper where she was one of those, it's getting an increase like animal control and.
Forty-eight, now it's fifty-one, one for two people.
Yeah, because what happened was, I remember, because I questioned this, and they were paying her, she didn't get an increase last year.
I'm sure she did.
And they didn't pay her for, almost the whole year, they had to pay her rent to act it. Yeah, and so she getting, so this would be, she gets a debt increase and getting another one or something like that.
Let me ask a question, and the salary is based on what? Working what?
Uh, she works thirty-five hours a week, right? We just went over this, right, the other day, thirty-five hours a week.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, she's only here part day, Friday.
She decided she'd take a little less, so the clerk, I mean, they were gonna be equal, hour-wise.
Well, that's what, they've always worked thirty-five, right?
Okay, but I, I'm just.
Are they closed on Friday, Dave?
Uh, they have about three hours maybe.
They work thirty-five hours.
They close like Wednesday afternoon.
Who is the other one that worked thirty-five hours, is somebody else?
Most works thirty-five, thirty O A.
We got some crazy stuff.
Both, both those and she work thirty-five hours a week.
Yeah, that's right.
So the salary is based on thirty-five hours? Yeah, it's based on the hourly rate, which is the contract rate.
Yeah.
Thirty-five hours a week plus one day. What, what, what's, the rate of, the rate of pay is twenty-eight, right? We just went over this stuff.
I think so.
The other day, I think the rate of pay is twenty.
And the longevity went up because you're making changes there too, for a few certain people in town.
There was only two people that longevity affected, I think it's.
But longevity wouldn't be in that.
Okay.
Longevity's on a separate line.
A separate one.
Yes.
Similar.
Yeah. Twenty-eight, right, times thirty-five, times fifty-two. Let's see what that comes out, see if that's a mistake. Twenty-eight, times thirty-five, times fifty-two. Is fifty thousand, nine sixty?
We did a times the eighteen, nineteen, forty hours.
Yeah, excuse me, is it eighteen, forty?
I don't overcounted it, but.
I'll do it, let me do it.
I'm thirty-five, hours a week, three sixty-three.
No, it's not, I.
Right, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not right, why are we doing it? Not accounting.
So, just tell her, I mean, she does work for the town.
How do you pay people more, more than what they're working? They're not working those two or three extra days unpaid.
Depends where the calendar comes out.
Yeah, not on the calendar, it has, it has any day you work, you work a day, you get paid.
If June thirtieth is in the middle of the week, they're working June thirtieth, if that may be a weekend, they're not, that's the way I look at it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying to you.
It makes it up on the other month, but.
What I'm saying to you.
Three sixty-five is three sixty-five.
There's so many days you're working a year, you get paid.
Fifty-two weeks.
There's nobody not getting paid for two days, and then you gotta pay an extra two days.
Janice is doing it because of state.
I don't care.
I think we need to.
Might be a state reg on that.
She had something a few months back.
Every department's not doing that, are they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Police, communications, we're doing it.
Next year, we should reduce every, this budget by a day.
It doesn't make sense, nobody, nobody, nobody's getting, working an extra two day, I don't care if there's extra five days this year, nobody's working an extra five days for free. They're getting paid for every day that they're, they punch a clock in.
Yeah.
You can tell by look in Paul's face, he agrees with you.
I've said this since the beginning, Paul.
It makes no sense.
Everybody said you're wrong. Told me I was wrong, so I just let it go.
We didn't.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't say you're wrong.
She did, but I think that we definitely need to.
You need to get a, a state.
To add the D O R, or.
The point is, I'm trying to say, Paul, if there were four hundred days in a year, it's irrelevant, every day that an employee this town works, they're paid. Whether it be four hundred days, three hundred days a year, it's irrelevant, you're getting paid for every day you work, so at the end of the year, I don't understand why you're getting an extra two days paid. Because you didn't work two days with no pay.
Here's a good thing, the schools didn't do it.
That could, that could hill the ten million dollars. It makes no sense.
Oh, there's someone.
Just saying.
I don't know.
How do they get it?
No.
It just doesn't make sense. I don't care, I don't care who says it, it doesn't make sense, no one, as no one has two days.
They get paid for what they clock in and clock out.
That's right.
So are we good with one twenty-eight, nine, five, five?
Jesus.
Yeah.
So this one, would you do the math?
Yeah.
One twenty-eight, nine, five, five, right?
Yeah, veterans?
No, he wants me to do the math.
Oh, I thought you were doing it.
I am, well, I keep getting. Thirty-five hours a week, right?
Times twenty-eight.
Fifty-two.
Yeah.
Right, equals, plus, let's see, plus seven, I think it's seven, plus seven, right?
Seven.
Time, yeah, seven is the, the extra day.
Oh, I don't care.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I.
Times twenty-eight. It's fifty-one, one fifty-six. Uh, you're fifty-one, one eighty-four. Want me to change it?
There was a cost of living increase that you gave. That's another.
I would say, I would say leave it.
Is it another hour?
Another hour is.
Maybe we did it, yeah, another hour.
Let's just leave it.
Okay, but you know what? If you tried, if you took out, if you took out that extra day from police, fire, communication.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
Good day.
So how many days next year is it, actually?
Depends on what we're gonna leave.
I don't work on the same calendar.
I, I know, I.
I don't work on the same calendar.
So this, think about it this way, if there were five extra days next year, everybody gets a free week of pay.
You can't have five, it's either gonna be one or two beyond your fifty-two weeks.
Why don't we get a determination from the D O R?
I know, I know, I mean.
Do you hear the answer? Get a determination from the D O R and see if we have to do it, if we have to do it, fine, if we don't have to do it.
How many have to do it, schools aren't doing it.
We're, we're gonna deal with that next year as opposed to this year, right?
They're not doing it.
You see what I'm saying? But if you have to do it, they'd be doing it.
I think it's probably a janice.
We've seen that the D O R's had a difference of opinion in town council before, so.
We could amend it on the town, again on.
I don't think I'm gonna have the answer that quick, Brad, I think, leave it this way, we deal with it next year.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all.
Because all it is, is a budget, and hey, if they don't get paid the extra eight hours, then hey, it's actually in the budget, it kicks back.
No, 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 not that easy.
I can guarantee you, I can guarantee you one thing, if you took it all out for all the departments in the town, it would be less than the forty-six dollars we're talking about.
That could be, that's not the point, Paul.
I understand, I'm just being a wimp.
You went for the fellow government, you could've got away with it.
Of course not. Paul, it was plain and simple. Two, two, uh, it was two thousand eighty hours a year.
That's right.
Or, then they changed it because somebody came up with this complimentary thing, two thousand eighty-seven hours a year, remember? And then, that's what you get, you got paid, you, we all got paid, well, I don't care if you were G S eighteen, you got paid by the hour, period. You worked, you got paid, if you took vacation time, it, they paid you for vacation.
You get paid vacation rate.
That's right.
Or sick time, or whatever, all the benefits you had.
End of story.
Yeah.
None of this foolishness, there was no such thing as longevity, there was no such thing as.
I feel like I'm driving in a blizzard here.
I know, I know, it's crazy.
It's not legal for the government, how come it's legal for the state, everybody else?
I'm trying.
Veteran services.
One thirty-three, two fifty.
I wanna go get a cup of coffee.
Veteran services.
Okay, total, one, veteran state, twenty-two hundred.
And you want the total?
On veterans, and, and lo and what he said tonight, are we gonna change his?
No.
Give him an increase, we're, we're staying, okay.
Three forty-four, I mean, three forty-two, eight twenty-two?
Yes.
Yep.
Boy, thank God we didn't have to cut that one hour.
I know, huh?
Okay, library, one-ten, eight seventy-one.
Yeah.
And then the white library, fifty-two thirty-five. And we're all set on art, cultural, historical, commission.
Total, cultural, one one six, eight oh six.
Yeah.
Okay, retirement of debt, five eighty-five.
We have one more year for that?
Then we can fund the financing area.
Total state assessment and charges, one oh five, eight forty-two.
Yeah.
And total county assessments, one twenty-six, five thirty-six. For a total intergovernmental expenses of two thirty-three, eight forty-seven. Okay.
Total pensions.
Forty-five, five, I know, I, I mean, these are just, what, you wanna talk about?
We just skip over, no, we'll just skip over here.
Just want you, just want you to know that we saved them.
Total retirement, pensions, eight twelve.
We haven't hit that yet.
Two forty-seven.
Two forty-seven.
Yeah. Workman's comp, twenty-five thirty-nine. Police and fire accidental, twenty-five thousand, for a total, total workman's comp of forty-five, five thirty-nine. Unemployment, thirty. Health insurance, one million, two forty-eight.
One million, two forty-six?
No.
Two forty-eight, two sixty-two.
Oh, all right, I'm down the bottom, talking.
Right. No, and then the stipend is fourteen-four, how many people have stipends?
What's the? Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
The one sixty-two is down by quite a bit of money, because now save a hundred thousand dollars by changing the retirees' healthcare plan. Okay? And.
Ninety bucks, yeah.
And the healthcare letters went out to the retirees, I got mine yesterday. And have we had any calls from the retirees at all, that's good, good.
Their contribution went down and their benefits increased, so.
Case of the mail.
On Sunday?
Uh, Friday, no, Saturday was Saturday, all right, sorry.
Total health insurance is one million, two sixty-two, four hundred?
You got it.
Okay. Down from one thirty, three twenty-three.
You run Obamacare?
Huh?
Okay.
Eight hundred.
Total Medicare, fifty thousand. Total, that's life insurance. Medicare. Capital equipment.
Yeah, it went down.
Capital equipment went down?
Yeah, we lost a dump truck there.
Two seventy-one, thirty.
You know, I gotta comment on that, I thought he needed a dump truck. Rust is terrible, and we were discussing it, he said, you guys are working too hard on the dump truck.
When you're gonna update the vehicle sheet, anyway, some of the vehicles we don't even own anymore, the sheet that we got.
And that's the ones that are insur, that are on the insurance policy.
We don't even own them.
I understand that.
Yeah, so apparently we're paying for those, right, on the insurance policy?
Whatever ones are listed there.
Whenever we swap out, we let them know, we just have to update the list, so our list is, is.
When do we get that list, Ali? April twenty-fourth? Yeah, April twenty-fourth.
It was a hundred and date, April twenty-fourth.
And that came from the insurance company?
Yep, last July, I specifically asked each department head to go through it and tell me if they have any vehicles that are not, that they don't use them.
Did I get that?
The car is not on there.
We're paying for those.
Why?
Because that, that one was done after April twenty-fourth.
We got the list, April twenty-fourth, right, so we're paying for those, and some of those vehicles we don't even have.
Well, let me break it this way, they never needed a car.
Which one's specific?
Which ones, which vehicles do we have in play over that list?
I have to look at them, there are a couple, the nineteen sixty-seven street sweeper.
Street sweeper, that dump truck that he's not driving?
No, but that's just recent, that dump truck.
But that's just recent.
What, do you know any vehicles that run that list that we don't own anymore?
Uh, yeah, one of the, one of the ones on, I haven't got the list here, but one of the ones on the top is.
I think we still.
I was wrong about.
One of the vans for the construction.
I was wrong on that, they are using two vans.
I, I was wrong on that, I read it wrong, I'm thinking Aerostar, like a little small van, but, but we do use the big van.
We need to have.
Brown bag plus the one they use.
One of them we don't.
We need to have another vehicle, not this, not this vehicle.
We do own it, Paul, we do own it, I was wrong.
We can pursue that, though.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should.
Great idea.
We're doing like about two, last, last time we, but.
So the total capital budget's two seventy-one, five, five, six?
Yes.
That's what you said. I thought it was a limit. I didn't know you could do that, I was told you can't.
What's that?
Buy another town, equipment on chapter ninety? That's what he said the other night.
Yeah.
There was some equipment that you can't buy under chapter ninety. Yes.
He did.
So, I was told.
He bought that order on the chapter ninety, didn't he, or no, they, that's a lease.
Two seventy-one, five, five, six, right?
And capital property, sixty-five, three ninety-five.
Sixty-five. Capital Property, sixty-five, three ninety-five?
Yeah.
Yes. Total, total.
Or total capital and benefits of two million, five thirty-seven, nine thirty-seven, forty.
Yep.
Okay, Court Judgments, two thou, two hundred thousand. Liability. Total Liability.
I can't hear.
Forty-three, six forty.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Total.
Liability, forty-three, six forty.
Yep, yep, got it, got it.
Gasoline.
Got the school here.
One thirty-eight, right?
Yeah. Elementary school, one thirty-eight.
That's everything.
Total gas and D show.
Not like that, even though he said he's got a few extra thousand. Carl would say, I think he'd be doing around one thirty.
Three eighty, one six four.
But we looked at one thirty-eight, the initial request.
Right, so the gas, one thirty-eight, right, one thirty-eight?
Yeah.
All right.
Wait, that, that was his original and we, we cut it.
No, his original was more than that.
He asked for about one forty-five.
And then we cut it to one thirty-eight.
We went back to one thirty-eight, which was trained this year.
That's what's getting everything confused.
So the total gasoline and diesel fuels are three eighty-one, six forty?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Because I was fighting around with the recomputation here. Bristol, Bristol Aggies, where did you guys get?
He said he.
Thirty thousand, nine oh six. Okay. And the other one is, oh, call me, is one million, five eighty-one, five forty-nine?
Right, that's based on their tuition, the unknown is the transportation because they haven't negotiated that contract yet.
Could I, so I don't want anybody to think that false advertising is the kind that causes the problem with us going into a joint town meeting.
You didn't get.
I hope you, she's sleeping over.
I know, I got her.
Did you get her on camera?
I got her, yeah.
You saw what she did, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted you to know. I want to say, why don't, if, let's vote the school budget and say that it can go up. Based on the figures that we get verified with them tomorrow, the day after, whatever day it is, it can go up by the forty-six thousand dollars. If, in fact, those are the true figures.
That's fine.
Is that all right with everybody else?
I'm good with that.
Yep. Okay, that's how.
Maybe we should just vote out and say this is close and maybe off by forty-six. You guys are okay with that?
I'm all right with it.
Yep.
Okay, so what's the bottom line?
The bottom, bottom line?
Yep.
Okay. Give me a break, yeah, I'll get to it. All right, the bottom, bottom line is twenty million, five ninety-seven, one oh two. Plus forty-six thousand. Just in case.
We're on the.
Wait, no, the bottom, the bottom line. Keep, look at the end page, keep going, keep going.
Okay.
Keep going.
Here it is.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
All right.
It's twenty thousand.
See that?
Twenty million, twenty million, five ninety-seven, one oh two.
Eight forty-five?
Or.
I certainly hope so.
Or.
We can do it next, whatever. What do you want to do for a special?
Or twenty million, six forty-three, forty.
Okay.
Hey, well, you're the accounting. I'd like, I'd still like to know when you can buy a chapter ninety.
Then, you know what, at the beginning of the, of the budget season or the beginning of the year, we should sit down and, and put formally all these questions so we know.
Well, we're right on that, because, you know, the money spent on chapter money for vehicles, you don't spend, you can't spend on roads, you can't do anything else.
And if you don't spend it on roads, what happens to that?
General fund?
No, no, you have to spend it. You don't spend it, I don't think you can get it.
What's that?
I'm sure we got enough votes.
Need to be done, we're going to spend. No, we, we spend it, they reimburse us.
Right.
Are we going to vote on the school thing now?
You have to spend it.
We'll vote on, we'll vote on everything.
Okay.
So we're voting on this twenty million dollar number.
Okay.
In the article.
Actually, technically, if you vote for the, if you vote for the bottom line budget, you're voting for everything.
You're laughing.
Right?
What else you have?
Okay.
No, you're going to vote for the articles, too.
You have to vote for the articles.
I understand that.
All right, let's book it, see this? Eight forty-five, we're out of here.
Yeah, I'm leaving at eight forty-five.
My second.
It'll work.
Lisa.
Matt, are you, are you a douche bothering you here?
The next thing you know, he's going to have a hat there, he's going to have a cigar and.
Pay for his trucks if he needs them.
Listen, I'm trying to maintain these mat and ayatul good looks.
He's going to come in with his little belt, red crushed velvet.
We're not talking about him.
Oh. I'm trying to maintain my mat and ayatul good looks.
I, I, maybe you're losing too much weight and the bones is not.
The bones are seventy years old, that's what's wrong.
Okay, here we go, special town meeting.
What, the special town, you said?
Yeah.
All this controversy, all I did was change chairs. The only comfortable one here.
Yeah, well, that keeps us awake.
This, this first article is about, uh, keep cut aggregate.
What's non-money?
Non-money, but, um.
No, we don't do it.
You guys don't do it, but we do it. Paul, do you have a rec, do you guys want to vote on a recommendation?
Sure, I'll, I'll, why don't we make, listen for.
Yeah, we need a.
Because you guys, you.
They don't.
They don't vote, but we have to vote, right?
Right, so I need a.
A motion?
A motion.
Which one is this?
To recommend or not recommend?
My motion, my motion is not to recommend.
Looks like it's Brad.
Not to recommend the article.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have to, we have to.
Yeah, we have to vote, no, all those in, to want to vote, no.
No recommendation.
No recommendation.
This is no recommendation.
Yeah, no recommendation, all in favor?
Second.
Yeah.
Somebody's got to make a motion, somebody's got to second it.
I thought he just made a motion.
I didn't make the motion.
No, your partner did over there.
Nobody made the second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
I vote.
Brad, who's going to show you?
It's like driving in a blizzard.
Well, we're just two of us and Charles don't know, that's the problem.
Yeah, pushing out, it's not good. Okay, the volunteer.
There's two, isn't there two articles? There's two petition, there's two petitions.
Is this the same? This is the same as this one? I thought it was.
It's just all one?
I thought it was part of, yes. Okay.
This is all part of one, right?
No, I made a motion.
Oh, God, you guys are losing it, too.
So we can consider this number one?
It's getting late, go ahead.
Yes.
That is going to be Article one.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Okay, Article one.
So now this is Article two.
Article two is the one that's written there.
It's for the match of the, um, fire assistance program, thirteen ninety-five.
What happened to the three hundred hours for the veterans' grade meetings? That's the next one I got.
Oh, yeah.
No, I don't.
No, I don't either.
No, I don't.
No.
I got Article one here as the schmagmar article.
Are you in a special?
The next page.
You're in a special town when you.
Yeah.
Special town meeting articles.
All right, this is not your first one?
Must have been assembled wrong.
I got five.
One, that's the one, right?
No, no, before that, what's that before that?
Fire.
Fire, that's Article two.
Oh, this is one article here.
That's Article two.
Wait a minute.
Back up a bit.
Article one is Article two.
That's number two. That's part of number one.
Yeah.
That's number two.
That's number two.
Instead of being one article, this will be number two, okay?
That's great.
This is two, okay.
I think you need some charade.
Okay, should I have a vote from the board, please?
I vote that we get coffee in here next, next time, Jesus Christ.
A motion that we adopt, that we recommend Article two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we recommend Article two.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, Article number three. Last year's bills? No. Oh, this is just, it's new, new numbers.
I make a motion to adopt, to recommend Article three, it says just to, to change the accounting numbers.
I second that.
All in favor?
Make a motion, I have no recommendation.
Second over here or something.
Second. Paul said it.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Paul said it, Paul said it.
He's got to have a harder time seconding and making motions.
Okay, Article number four. We're putting three hundred dollars back into free cash.
Uh, wait a minute, is that the one?
Three hundred.
All veterans' grades.
Back to free cash.
Yeah.
I, I recommend.
Make a motion, we put the three hundred back in the free cash. Okay, recommend for the finance committee.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
That was quick.
Yeah, right?
All in favor?
You're catching, you're catching on, Chris. All right, this is number one.
Next one, somebody else's thing.
Pretty sure we're having enough not to need a nap at eight o'clock, so.
Hey!
Go to bed at eight.
Hey!
On the finance committee.
Okay, that was better.
I'll see you at six thirty when I open my doors tomorrow, you bring the coffee, right?
Okay, two thousand dollars from the sale of cemetery locks to be used by the cemetery, cemetery commission. To make more cemetery locks.
That's, that's a non-money article, I recommend.
Second. If you got some support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee?
No recommendation.
I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion, we're going to have a recommendation.
Okay, Article.
What did you say?
Um, no recommendation.
All right, all in.
You might make it.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, Article six. Pay last year's bills in the amount of thirty-five, seven eighty-two.
Make a motion to pay last year's bills in, in, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Yep.
Close to my line.
We're getting it like music. Blizzard stop.
Okay, the O P E B fund, first year, to put some money aside, a hundred thousand dollars.
Where's the O P E B B?
Again?
Make a motion to fund the hundred thousand OPID fund.
OPID. OPID.
What is this, O P D, O P D?
Other post-employment benefits.
Maybe I should have spelled that, most people in that audience don't know that.
Okay, do we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Can you, Ally, can you?
Yeah, I wrote that.
For the first one, and then you can just do it.
Yeah, I, because people won't know.
Okay, do we have a second?
Did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, wasn't there a three hundred dollar grade maintenance, Ally, forever?
That's in the. That's in the annual.
That's in the annual?
That's in the annual, yeah.
Yes, okay. I thought we moved it from the old one.
No, we checked.
No, we checked.
All right, so I got them to the back? Aye.
I did that today.
Aye, hold on, I got them to the back now. That, because that changes everything, you know, if I do it in one place.
Aye.
You know that? Changes everything.
Article one.
We can just not get that, the three hundred bucks in balance.
Okay, where are we going to put the?
Well, we have to change this one.
Change town clerk, we're going to change houses of the. An original district school police.
Town clerk goes what?
Forty-nine oh seventy-four.
Who am I, who am I looking for?
What was Chuck? Sixty-one, two six six.
Two or three?
Two.
Two six six. Two six six.
Okay, but, was Chuck again?
Sixty-one, two six six.
Sixty-one, two sixty-six. And this is Article one, right?
Yep.
Article one will always be the omnibus, right? This will be our.
This is Article two?
Yep.
Do you need a motion?
Yep.
Yeah, the motion for the finance committee?
I need a second motion.
All right, you second it?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion.
A motion?
You made a motion? Do you have second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. I don't want to raise.
You want to raise?
No.
She must be running for election next year.
No, I've been doing this for nine years and.
We, who do you want to do the raise?
No. Anyway, moving on.
All along.
Oh, you can, we need to change it.
I was on Article one, so what is this?
No, this is Article two.
They changed it.
We need, this cannot say.
Wait a minute, no.
This is Article.
This is Article two now?
This is Article two.
Where's Article one?
Article one is the omnibus budget.
Okay.
Okay, you need to, well, Mark Rich is going to look at this, but he's going to take out and contractual increases to other employees. He's going to take out that line.
Where is, what do you?
Under the explanation.
At the top. Just to keep place with inflation.
There is no inflation.
Going to the federal government, there's no inflation.
Right here.
Okay.
What do we need to take out now?
Mark Rich will reword this, don't worry about it, but it says and contractual increases to other employees.
Just to keep place, yeah.
We're.
Anybody have inflation?
Yeah, we're just.
So, wait a minute, Lisa, let me get this right now.
No, I know, I'm sorry, no.
We're going to, we're going to lower your, we're going to lower the.
You can. You can make me fifty-five and you sit, you can take my six if we get it and you can split it amongst yourselves.
Oh, get on. The border slip, they haven't had, they haven't had a raise since two thousand and two.
Okay. Next. We need to.
We're going to get rich with the five hundred bucks.
And then.
Aye, aye.
My dog got bit yesterday, our paper is, uh, vet bills. Okay. Um, this is to change.
Two.
Two. No, we're on to them.
Three.
Three.
Omnibus is the one that one we could give, and now we're on to them.
What, three, okay. One is the omnibus, two is to propose, three is the...
Okay, this is about the board of health agents. This has to go in the special.
In the special?
Mm-hmm. That's what Mark Rich said. Remember, we had, we had this conversation a long time ago.
Okay, put it in the special, take a vote.
Because at the special, you create the position, and at the annual, you fund the position.
Okay. So how?
I still, we still need a recommendation.
So, this is what, if that's gonna go into the special, that's gonna be the last one from the special?
Mm-hmm.
Which is gonna be number...
Number eight.
Jesus, I gotta pull this all back.
No, just put special number eight on it, and then you'll have it later. You're gonna get a new one.
Make a motion to recommend Article eight of the special town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Make a motion. Yep. Second?
Second.
It's a money issue, we get this, uh...
But that one's all about...
Well, it's not a dollar, figure on this particular one, but...
It's gonna, it's gonna be funded.
But it's not a funding.
Yeah, but we voted on other things that are not funded.
No, usually, we've never voted on non-money. Right now, it's non-money. They can approve the position or do it.
Alright, we draw my second here.
No, you still, uh, not recommend and, I don't care.
No, you can't say not recommend, if you're gonna make a recommendation, you make it, you don't, you don't.
Or no recommendation.
You can do what you want, but, but customarily, we've never had a recommendation of something that we know.
I thought you guys just didn't make it, so like roadways, and like certain silly stuff.
No, if it didn't have money value, we didn't have any...
Okay.
This did, this did in the budget, there was a money amount for his salary.
There's a money amount.
It was like fifty...
There's a money amount.
I saw it, but it's not in the article.
Well, we voted money in the budget.
Right.
There's no money in this article.
It should be here.
So, it's like a non-recommendation for us, I think.
I don't know. You guys wanna put it as a no recommendation?
Okay, what you...
Well, take a vote and find out who's gonna do what.
You wanna, uh, you wanna recommend or not recommend? You have, do we have a motion to recommend or not recommend?
It's not a money, right now. It's not, I will, I make a motion not to recommend.
Second.
Not to recommend, or no recommendation?
I'm sorry.
No recommendation.
No recommendation.
Alright, all in favor?
I'm gonna lose.
The hell with that coffee, it gets a little stronger.
Houses. Okay.
I, I agree with you.
Alright, so it's a vote of...
But, it's the vote of the board.
Read it too.
I only transmit the vote of the board.
Yep.
Yep. So, this next one is Article three that we're looking at. The angle, right? Because we just transferred one, Article eight, the specials that we backed.
Al, you keep us on track, okay?
I'll make a motion that the board approves three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance Committee?
Make a motion, the board votes to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, see, that's an oxymoron, because there you set the salary for the health inspector that you're gonna vote on. Okay, moving on.
Yeah, that's, that's an oxymoron. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Okay. What number?
Four.
It's four.
Make a voting, make a motion the board approves Article number four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance Committee?
Make a motion, we approve, it's written.
Second?
Upstate.
I'll just vote no.
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
You can vote no.
Upstate.
Aye.
Oh, you guys.
They upstate, at least I voted no.
They didn't like the job that was done, that's why.
I just, I got, I can't even get my head around this.
We're trying to keep the longevity...
Pest control.
Okay, four, four fifty-five for pest control.
Make a motion that we continue pest control.
Let's do number five.
Five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Finance Committee?
Make a motion, make acceptance, it's written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two thousand dollars for the new Bedford woman shelter.
Motion to, uh, recommend.
Article six.
Make a motion to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. All in favor of Finance Committee?
Aye.
Okay, three thousand dollars for the fireworks.
Make a motion, we recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As long as there's dog biscuits in there. Finance Committee?
As long as Paul walks.
Finance Committee? For the fireworks?
Why do I, you only want to... I wanna see what you guys are gonna do.
You have a motion?
Nobody's jumping in on this one, I don't know.
Why do you think?
Anybody make a motion for the fireworks?
You guys do whatever you feel is right.
Anybody make a motion not to recommend for the fireworks?
You did it last year.
Make a motion not to recommend?
We do it every year.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Alright, motion to approve, alright, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to vote now.
You didn't vote? You did.
You just did.
I, I motioned to...
You better vote.
But you have to vote. Aye.
Yeah, we both said aye. I know you said... Bob disappeared.
They didn't say.
Break, to break the tie.
Okay, next.
Eight.
Three thousand dollars for advertising, it's really a non-money. It's more of a revolving account. So, we can receive...
Motion to, uh, to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Finance Committee?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, second? We have a second on this? I'll tell you what, I'm gonna go home in about two seconds.
Why not?
What am I, do you want to talk here, Brad?
Well, if you wanna talk, talk.
He said one, so if he wants a second, a second. You're, I'm not going to want to second things here.
No, I realize that, I'm asking for a vote.
No, you don't ask a vote, I told you, we didn't get to a second.
We haven't got a second yet. Um, is this one of those, 'cause it doesn't, it should take money out of the budget?
It's not, it's, it's, so she can take money in from businesses, it's a revolving account.
There's no cost to it.
There's no cost.
There's no cost, yeah.
People don't wanna advertise.
Right.
You're required to vote if you need it.
Alright, forget a vote, we ain't second, alright.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, are you guys done?
Any negative?
Nine. Okay.
Okay, Long Pond Boat Ramps, same thing, five thousand dollars.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to recommend.
Alright.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thirty thousand dollars for the research, for the assessors.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to recommend, second.
She didn't get her other one.
Motion, and a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
She didn't get her other part, remember, she was arguing, saying that she, she wasn't really arguing, she was saying that she did submit it by email, she never did submit it by email, um, so she'll be coming back on the call for that. It needed to be funded, but it's too late.
Okay.
Okay, um, this is another one for...
This, uh, Town of Free Town, uh... Where, where are we at now?
Number eleven.
Two thousand dollars to keep...
I didn't vote on it, so...
Okay, two thousand dollars for, um, communications department, a revolving account, same thing.
Motion to recommend, there's no cost to it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, Finance Committee?
Make a motion to recommend.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, the radio equipment, fan-related expenses, the amount of ninety-nine, eighty-nine, fifty, this is to, uh, put down in a sauna.
Tower.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Make a motion to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finance Committee?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four hundred dollars to match our share of the FEMA assistance fire fighters grant.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars to purchase radio pagers and charges for the fire department.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance Committee?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was fourteen, right, yeah, that was fourteen.
Okay, I need a motion from the board of selectmen to vote to send this gap, to send this to the planning board.
They're gonna pull the article?
No.
No, we need to vote to send it to the planning board.
I make a motion that we send this article to the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Does that mean it, uh, at the top, will this be read at the town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this'll be, uh, on the Finance Committee, uh, motion for no recommendation?
I'm gonna make a motion that we don't recommend.
Second motion.
That you don't recommend?
Don't, no recommendation on don't recommendation.
Well, no recommendation, that's fine.
No recommendation.
Actually, it doesn't matter either way, if they send it back, doesn't matter either way.
This is gonna be Article...
That was fifteen.
Fifteen.
That was fifteen.
Does the board have a recommendation or no recommendation?
On what?
Healerway.
I tried to recommend it, send it to the...
Where, no, we voted to send it to the planning board, but we also have to vote on a recommendation.
To send it, you mean?
No.
To fund, do it.
Right.
Again, if you send, if you send it back, why do you have to vote on it?
Because that's what the planning board needs. It needs to go back to them.
I understand that. You've already voted to send it back to them.
We can have no recommendation.
Where is Cageway?
I'll make a motion that we, uh...
That little, that new subdivision that we knew.
Yeah, that, right across from Howard's Auto.
I mean, does it comply with all the requirements?
Well, that's what they're probably gonna do. Yeah, we were there at one meeting, remember, they were talking about the curb, curb cutting and the sidewalks?
But you can't have a recommendation on something that may not, may not be approved.
Right, so that's why, you wanna have no recommendation?
No recommendation.
Not until we fight off from the planning board.
Exactly, right, right.
I make a motion, we have no recommendation on Article fifteen.
We can change it on town floor.
You can, you can, you can, yeah, you can explain that on town floor, it's gotta go back to the planning board.
Yeah, then it's gonna have to come out of the special town.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I, okay, I second Lee's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Street light. Boy, is that gonna...
Where is that now?
That's gonna open again.
There's gonna be a lot of streetlights.
Make a recommendation to approve, uh, to, we have to make a recommendation on this?
I don't, I, I don't know why this is in here. Oh, it's 'cause it's by petition.
That's right.
Well, I, I gotta be honest with you, if you're gonna have one there, you know what's gonna happen, it's gonna be like...
Can we work with the, with the people and then, and then maybe they can withdraw their article?
It's by petition, you gotta have it.
How, would you...
No, they, right, but they can withdraw it.
Yeah, but how, how would you...
I don't know.
I, again, I, you know.
This is...
Listen, they got a petition signed.
I know.
I don't really care about them having a line at Chipley Road, what I really care about is all of a sudden, everybody's gonna want a light on their corner.
Yeah, the next one, they come in on top.
Let me tell you something, that's a very bad intersection.
No, no, I got no problem with the light there, Paul, don't get me wrong, but no problem. I got a problem with everybody else in town is gonna want a light on their corner, because their kids play there, it's a dangerous corner, it's so stormy.
It's breeze town.
That don't even make sense. They all got the ball.
And if you're willing to go, if you're gonna go there...
Wait a minute. That's not, that petition is not the right petition attached to this.
Oh, it needs to be attached to this?
Well, they had it attached when they, when they delivered it to us. That's the petition for change the, uh, to change zoning maps.
Makes more sense, we need the, you need the petition for this?
We have that petition, we submitted.
Okay.
The light.
These are all some people.
Yeah, but that's not for the lights now, is, is the petition for the light?
No, it is not.
No?
That's the petition for change the zoning map on North Main Street.
What's my board feeling on, on this, uh...
The page that you're looking at is the petition for the light.
Where's the signatures for that?
I just didn't include the signature.
Oh, you do have them, right?
Yeah, 'cause they're on the back.
Okay, she has the signature.
They're on the back of the form, that's all.
Okay.
No recommendation, you wanna go with no recommendation? Uh, can you make a motion for it?
I'll make a motion for no recommendation.
Second.
Okay.
I recommend we put a streetlight in.
Second.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Tom, you know...
Yes, there is.
Aye.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, it doesn't matter.
Listen, we have an argument, somebody else says, I'm, I will say that's a dangerous intersection, there's been accidents here, that's the reason we're putting it in.
We're talking a hundred and twelve blocks.
It's, it's not that far, it's what happens after.
Anybody on my board get any other recommendation or, or anything, I mean...
No, 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 no.
No, but the recommendation, the, the, the thing has to be made whether, by the select or not, it's an appro, or the, the planning board, whether it's an appropriate place to have a light or not.
The planning board doesn't have to make the determination.
Well, somebody does.
Board of Select?
Board of Select.
Okay. That's what I'm saying, the board select or the planning, so, I'm not determining whether or not they should have a light or not, I don't...
Well, they just voted to, to approve the light, that's what they just voted, so, what is our board's feeling on this?
It's a hundred and twelve bucks, by the way.
I know, but that's not the point, and I know, I know exactly, because this is what's gonna happen. Everybody is gonna come in with a petition now, 'cause they're at the street light, that's what it's gonna be, that's why I said, maybe there's another way to handle this, that's all.
You wanna go with no recommendation on this?
I, I, I...
He made a motion, anybody, you seconded it?
I second it.
Alright, and we have a vote on the board here now, please? On, on no recommendation?
Alright.
And this article might even get thrown out.
Which one?
Uh, you voted against it.
It's a hundred and twelve bucks a year.
Alright. Is the vote of the board?
The light.
No recommendation?
Because of what?
Well, if you got three votes, you got that one, three.
We have three votes.
Mark Rich can't...
That's it.
We recommended it.
No, Mark Rich looks at what, warrant articles about legal or illegal.
To put a light up is legal.
I'm sure he's gonna look at it.
Good, if he's gonna pull it out, I wanna know about it ahead of time.
I know. I mean, that's why we hired a town council to see what we have to change and what we don't have to change.
Have we put lights up before?
Yes, we put lights up and we've taken them down.
We let the, we're letting the board of selectmen decide.
Not by, not like this.
Selectmen, town...
Not by petition, they put a light by petition.
Anybody can make a petition to do something.
Anybody can make a petition.
Right, I understand that.
Alright. If you want it, do it a different way.
And there will be more petitions.
Then we oughta get it done before the annual town meeting.
I agree.
Good.
What is this one, uh...
Dog licenses.
No, this is a petition.
No, this is another petition.
Changes zoning.
Submitted by Lisa Polinsky. Wait a minute, I'm missing one.
You missed one, Richard.
No, Mary.
Vote the petition article for town. Vote this petition article for town.
Free Town Zoning Map by Changing the Zoning Classification. Uh, well, we're not gonna have an opinion on this. It's not a blessing.
By motion to recommend the article.
It's going from what to what?
It's a one small law. I believe it goes from residential to, uh...
General.
To general, right?
Because everything around it is general use.
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
I...
No recommendation?
No recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Ditto, next one.
It's just a matter of formatting.
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation?
Motion, we recommend eighty.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's no money, right?
No recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion for this?
The flood?
Yeah.
There's a little bit of controversy about the flood map, isn't there?
There's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Why, uh, why is there so much controversy?
Because when they change your flood plan, it changes your insurance, everything on your house. So, say you weren't in a flood plan, and they say you're in a flood plan, your insurance will go up five to seven thousand dollars.
Your insurance can double, triple.
Easy. My, my assistant said, in one, in some instances, more than forty thousand to others.
But then, if you don't have the ordinance, you can't get flood insurance at all. So, in the event of a loss, it's totally liable.
Well, I guess they changed the FEMA change, according to this, changed the, uh...
They did.
The flood plan.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Let me go to you. In fact, it's gonna have a lot of citizens.
If they're in a flood plain, some of their insurances could go through the roof. I mean, they're...
Everybody along the line.
You want a planning board of conservation?
Automatically makes your house move.
I haven't seen this yet, but I know it from my real estate practices and houses that are in flood plains.
We won't do that now, my friend.
This is why, specifically why we ask for zoning in these kind of articles to be at the fall town meeting, not at the special town, not at the annual town meeting.
So, we don't know how he's gonna end up, like, is this thing gonna win back me, for instance? Who knows?
Is this the whole thing? This is all...
Watching, just, watching, just, I don't know.
Put it on a special. Did the planning, did the planning board...
I thought I asked that, and she said, I think she, well, I think, Richard, you said that she needed this on here?
Yeah, we've got a deadline from our federal friends.
Yeah, but did the planning board ever have a, a hearing to talk about this with the people?
Is there, is there funding for this article?
The people that live in the flood, floodplain area, advise them of this?
Oh, yeah. There's probably a lot of them.
Oh, yeah. It's been all over the news. It's been everywhere. Not, and not specifically in town, but...
I know the floodplain issue's been all over the news, but I wonder if...
But no, no, I haven't heard anything about having anything in town.
We posted a notice on the website a while ago, and all folks with apps were available.
Oh, they've got it cut out. You get into a town meeting, there's gonna be some real stiff opposition about this.
Well, in essence, do we have a choice?
Yeah, that's a question. I don't know.
I don't think we have a choice.
The, the answer basically is no, you don't have a choice. Uh, if you choose not to do anything, then the jeopardy that the homeowner in is in is he doesn't have access to flood insurance at all.
As far as the finance committee goes, we have no recommendations.
Yeah. Mary's gonna have to speak to this. I'm not, I'm not speaking to this. I don't know anything about it.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I don't either.
All right, so I have, I have no recommendation.
Can we postpone this to the fall meeting? That would be the spot.
I, I asked, and they said that, there was a deadline.
Oh, Mary?
Uh, Mary.
Oh, you just said that.
Yeah, no, I asked to try and put it off till the fall.
Well, I'd have no recommendation on this one.
Okay, that's true.
Do you want to make a motion or not?
Make a motion that, uh, we have no recommendation on the article we have. I don't know enough about it to say yes or no.
Well, if we make a motion with no recommendation, it's gonna get on, right?
It's gonna get on. No, we can pull it. We can pull it, but we didn't put it, I mean...
This is Article nineteen, right?
We don't have to put it on. But what he's saying is, you do.
Right.
Right. We can pull it at the last minute. If we talk to her and she says no, I'll, I'll wait till the fall, then we'll pull it.
Right, then I'll make a motion not to recommend the article at this point.
Not to recommend or no recommendation? No, just...
At this point, no recommendation.
Right.
Second.
But we're gonna have it on the meeting.
Yeah, and then we'll pull it if we have to. We'll withdraw it if we have to. Somebody might give a motion to table. I don't know. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is another one that really should've waited till the fall. I don't understand it.
That was Article nineteen, not twenty?
That was nineteen.
That was nineteen. Twenty is, uh...
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging.
Richard, when you have the meeting with the department head, didn't you tell them the week for all worded audit, article, um, articles to be submitted at the fall town meeting?
Yes, this came in from the board.
This is a recommendation that the board wants to make. I think it's more of a clarification thing than anything on the bylaws.
Make a motion, we have no recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Paul?
This is low money?
No.
No, this is just kind of a reorganization.
I was talking to Barbara, it was like, basically, this replaces whatever was in the existing bylaws.
Okay, but why? Like, what, why and what for?
They're pruning certain things that are not applicable to our town. You know, some, the whole big state thing, you might need a twelve-member board and subboards and all that, which we don't have. We've only got seven people on the board.
I think it was just to clarify.
Uh, you could be, yeah.
Well, she's gonna have to speak.
They work pretty hard on it, though, you know? I know that.
Yeah.
I'm sure. That's what I'm saying. Like, it should really be given the time necessary on town meeting floor and to understand it. Again, it will, if, if, if it's illegal or if anything's wrong, it'll get held back.
You wanna go, you wanna go through four hundred hours of explanation?
That's what's gonna happen.
Again, you know, you're gonna get, people are gonna look at this, get confused, and then, and then there's gonna be, they're gonna, they're gonna go to page three, they're gonna read one sentence, go, "Wait a minute, I don't agree with that," and then it's gonna be, you know...
And exactly. Instead of giving the time necessary, they're not able, yeah.
The Council on Aging board vote for it?
I believe the, the board, yeah.
They put this together?
They're the ones that submitted it.
They put it all together and all that. I was just talking to Barbara this morning, you know, just to see if my understanding was like hers, was basically replacing a lot of what was there and taking out a lot of stuff that was not necessary in the existing bylaws. That was my understanding.
Again, it's, we still don't know anything about it. So, I don't, I can't say anything, recommend something you don't know anything about. We certainly not. It's got nothing to do with us.
No, it doesn't.
And if you guys, if you guys go with it, you gotta, it's gotta get on there. But the discussion, I think, is gonna kill you.
It'll be last.
Well, I'll, I'll, my motion simply would be no recommendation.
There you go.
Second.
No matter if you do it or you don't do it, there's still gonna be discussion on this. There's gonna be...
Please, I'll be all in favor. On the poll.
Right.
Somebody along the line has gotta figure out the, the, the board.
They're gonna have to come. Oh, they're gonna, what's the name?
Has made the right decision. It wasn't one person's decision, it was an entire board's.
I know.
They gotta see what they have.
All you need is...
Barbara's gonna have to be there on that one.
Right.
Well, you're doing right. Think it ends up on there? What does the school, what do you always say? Let the people make the decision.
They're the ones that, that submitted it. Get the board to be there.
Right, but, but the thing is, is the reason why we do all money articles is so people can take the time necessary to understand all the worded articles. That's why we separate them.
Yeah, yeah.
Move on.
So, this should've been on.
In the fall.
In the fall.
Yeah. All right.
Number twenty-one.
But that's, that was...
Article twenty-one.
Should follow vote to rate for it or five thousand dollars for funds?
Five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I'm, I'll, I'll make that motion to recommend. Second, that's, that's my call.
Do they spend it? If it doesn't, it's not spent, what happens?
It was back to the general fund. General fund.
I'll make a motion except the article is written.
Second?
Second.
Oh, it carries, it carries.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, just one thing on here. It leads us down to Barbara making the judgment. She doesn't wanna make it on her own.
I oppose it for that reason.
And that's why she wanted, say, her in conjunction with the selectmen, Lee knows the process, 'cause we had a couple last year.
No, we went through that at the last meeting. It should be something to be fu, to be funded and determined by the, by the guidelines set by the age, by the Council on Aging or something.
And we also, we also said it wouldn't just be for seniors, but I guess that didn't change either.
That's right. That's right.
It should be available for anybody that needs it.
It doesn't say that.
Well, why don't you, why don't you have a poll the article and rewrite it for the fall meeting?
No, you can't, you can't.
Why not?
The articles have been closed.
Well, we can change the article right now.
You can change, you can change. No, you have to make, no, you have to make a motion on the floor to change the article. This is the article last submitted.
Yeah, but we, who submitted it?
The Council on Aging.
And board of selectmen.
And board of selectmen.
And board of selectmen. So, why can't we change it right now before we vote on it? It's not, we, we can change it.
I don't think you can.
No, I don't think you can. You gotta change it on the floor.
Yeah, you have to...
We haven't voted on it.
It doesn't, the, the articles are all open and submitted. You can't change the articles. You can't change the wording of the articles.
Here's the deal. Understand this, that nobody in this town gives fuel assistance unless they go through this long process. They have to be in assistance.
It doesn't say that, though, Lee.
Yeah, but that's...
If it doesn't say, it doesn't happen. You should know that. You worked for the government.
What are you talking about?
It doesn't, it says that to be funded and determined by the Council on Aging Director, and it should be by the guidelines designed by the, like, the Council on Aging.
That's who does it now, the Council on Aging Director.
That's who makes the determination.
I don't know. I don't think it's right.
For the money that's available already. This is...
I don't agree with it, Paul.
Well, that's how, that's how their bylaws, huh?
I totally agree. They, they, she don't even agree to it. He just said it. She doesn't...
She does not wanna make the final determination. She'll do everything she can to get somebody the money. But once in a while, there is one person, and Lee has had the occasion to deal with him once or twice.
Yeah.
And Lee has actually gone and seen that they're out of oil.
Plus, it was brought out that last time, that it, it should be for other, anybody other that's seen this as well. It should be anybody. But that doesn't say that.
Can you cross out the word senior with that?
We can't change it.
Would that help you or no?
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to find out from...
I'm just saying, at the last meeting, we had it.
Just find, listen, find out what we can do with this article.
All right.
And I'm gonna tell you, I think there's...
Why senior ended up in there, I don't know, but when it was envisioned, it was people that needed fuel assistance because they're not necessarily seeing...
We got it, but it's just not the way it's written.
We're gonna leave this as Article twenty-one and just bypass it for now, or?
Well, we might have to revote.
We'll probably make a motion on the floor to, we might, you'd have to make a motion on the floor to change, to change amended.
Lee, why don't you call Mark Rich tomorrow and ask him how to write this? And ask him if we can change it before we vote on it?
And if we can't, at least we know how to amend it on the floor.
It doesn't matter. It's gonna, it's, it's, we'll just make a motion to amend it on town meeting floor.
Right.
It's not that big of a deal. It's just, the bill is there. Everything is there.
We're not gonna change the dollar value. We're not gonna change the wording.
The dollars aren't gonna change.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, you know how many times we've done that on town meeting floor and then the article to...
That's certainly not gonna hurt anything.
And our vote will stand.
Yeah.
All right. 'Cause we did...
So, what we wanna do, so I'm gonna understand this, we're gonna take the word senior out, that's what the process is?
Yeah.
We already...
No recommendation.
No, is it?
What was the vote? We, we just voted. It was three, it was three to, it was a three, yeah.
What was, I, I'm not asking, uh...
We voted three to do what?
What was the vote?
To, to recommend this. But they're gonna change the wording. Uh, they just agreed to change the wording on this to, to take out, strike the word senior out, and...
We can actually revote this. If we want to.
Revote, revote it out. You wanna recommend to take it, the recommendation off? Is that what you wanna do?
Well, I, you know, I'd like to see...
Paul, you made a motion?
I'd like, I'd like to see it done, when the article's done. You guys gonna change this article?
You wanna, you wanna see a final version, yeah?
Yeah. Well, actually, we're, we're...
See, we're going against the selectmen.
We're, no, 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 no. We're voting on an article that is not gonna be presented.
That's right. Well, it'll be presented, but they're gonna amend it.
They're gonna amend it.
We're, we're not, yeah, but we're not voting on the same article. We voted on an article that's gonna be amended, so...
That's right.
To see if the town will vote to raise for the special bill of funds, a sum of five thousand dollars to be funded as determined by the Council on Aging Director for senior fuel assistance. Cannot take any action relative there, too.
Strike out senior.
Emergency. We said that in the hall.
Yeah, but we can't do that. It has to be done on the floor.
Well, I think...
For fuel assistance.
You're gonna check into that.
Why, why don't you, why don't you have him check and then...
He's gonna review all these articles anyway.
Okay, have him check it.
Paul, let's have a motion to withdraw.
Well, again, it, it's not gonna matter, 'cause we're not voting on the same thing. If they change the article, we're voting on something different. We're not voting on the same thing.
I make a motion that we adopt this article with any changes that we're allowed to make from our attorney, Mark Rich.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ditto what he said.
Second.
Second, yeah.
If I were, I would call Mark Rich.
All in favor?
I, I, I don't agree.
I, I understand that.
Because it's not clear. We're, we're asking Martris to clarify. What's your next article, twenty-two?
Yeah, Lee, I think Barbara said, if she remains in charge of this, she would definitely go with one of the selectmen. She's not gonna do it alone. So, you're still gonna be involved. If...
Is that a problem, Lisa, if she calls one of us, this is just going on, because we have to vote on it as a group?
Yeah. And then, and then...
I didn't hear what it's squashing. I'm talking about, all right...
One of us is gonna vote.
No, if you've got a client somewhere, somebody needs fuel assistance, you can leave Barbara here, but she's definitely not gonna make the decision by herself. She's gonna choose Paul or Lee or possibly Lisa if she wants.
Here's the thing. I think we should withdraw the article and do it at the fall town meeting the right way.
That's what I said in the beginning.
Let's do it. It gives us plenty of time.
All right.
It's before, it's before the winter.
Sure.
Get it done the right way and not fix it most...
It has to be based on guidelines, not on fuel.
This gives us a time, well, it is based on guidelines. They have to read a certain criteria, a...
I know, but it's gonna say that, though.
This article is gonna have a lot of people talking. So, let's withdraw the article. Get it written the right way.
Motion to withdraw.
And withdraw.
All in favor?
And put it on the fall town meeting.
Motion to withdraw.
Move on.
Second.
All in favor, okay. Here's your three hundred dollars for the veterans' graves.
Okay, so we all, we're not gonna mark this twenty-one.
No, we're gonna mark the next one for me.
All right.
Motion to...
Paul, a second. All in favor?
I don't care.
Okay, Article twenty-one, we have a motion to, uh...
Motion, I accept it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Paul?
Lisa?
Article twenty-two?
Oh, no.
What are we doing?
To aggregate the electricity load.
This simply gives, gives, gives the citizens of Free Town a chance to buy in, pay the same electricity rate as the town has negotiated for one year, right, Richard?
No.
Motion for no recommendation.
I withdraw.
You know, you're gonna have a lot of things on this, on this one.
That is, this is a...
Hours.
Who cares? I don't worry about the hours that it's gonna take.
Because of...
We have a motion for no recommendation.
I should...
All in favor?
You're gonna get people to just leave.
Aye.
It's all time consuming. Our concern shouldn't be that. Our concern is to approve these articles that were submitted.
Next.
Whether we want it or we don't.
No, we can say, no, save this for the fall town meeting. No, withdraw this one. No, that's what we can do.
Well, wait a minute. This was submitted by a town administrator. Can you explain it to us?
Right, we already, we already did.
Yeah.
I know you did. You did it the other day, but you didn't do it tonight.
This is...
Don't need it tonight. We need to vote on the next article.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This, this is a mechanism where the town elects through town meeting that all of its residents will buy its electricity from one vendor. The resident can opt out of that plan if they want. We then work with other towns to aggregate our volume and do bulk purchasing. The reason I said no to your question, Lee, was because it wouldn't be the same contract. It would be another contract. What this does is allows town residents to save some money on their electricity. It also, because you're fixing a price over a term, allows them to have some certainty in what they're gonna be paying based upon their usage and not get hit with the fluctuations of surcharges for peak loads and buying, you know, gas and whatever they have to in the winter. We have a particularly hard winter. The reason it's on here is because if we wait till fall, by the time we go through and aggregate and get a contract, we will have passed the coldest winter months, and it'll have not as much value to the residents.
I get it.
Well, I don't get it. How are you gonna know, for example, by then? How many residents are gonna take it? How many aren't? Is there somebody that's...
No, bas- basically, everybody takes it unless they opt out.
And then you, if you want something different, you can get something different.
So, you have to opt out of this?
Yes.
Okay.
This is really confusing for senior citizens.
Well, I'm trying to play devil's advocate.
It's confusing for me as well.
The, the, you know, nineteen seventies, you know, type person in me says that government shouldn't be picking your electrical supplier. But I heard a lot of folks during the winter complaining about peaks and upcharges in electrical rates. This is the only way that I know to try and even that out a little bit for residents.
Paul, Lee?
Article twenty-three?
Huh?
They're making motion, we recommend this article.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to recommend.
Which one? Twenty-three?
Electricity one.
Electricity. It'll be voted on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
I thought we had a no recommendation on Article twenty-two when I called it.
I don't think so.
Yes, I did. I called it.
That's true, that's true. 'Cause it wasn't...
It wasn't a money article.
Wasn't money out of the town budget.
Okay, Article twenty-three.
Uh, did you take a vote already?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, stick with it.
All right, Article twenty-three.
Go ahead, Richard.
The Attorney General has determined that the process that I used to bid the feasibility study was not appropriate. Uh, this allows legislative relief so that we can, uh, basically justify the process.
If we, if this doesn't pass, what happens?
Then we can't pay any more bills for the project.
And what do we do then?
I'm sure we won't get a final result. Yeah, that would be problematic, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I need a motion to recommend this, obviously. So, I make a motion, we recommend Article twenty-three.
That'll pass.
All right.
All in favor?
Motion for the finance committee? Okay, second?
Second.